Community involvement, we invite the public to also join us in person or to participate via a remote option through Zoom or view on BCAT. Tonight, I'm chairing the meeting in Council President Jeff Coughlin's place, who is attending the annual Association of Washington Cities Conference this week in Spokane. And please note that Council over Eric Younger is also absent tonight as well as Michael Goodnow. Next up, we have the mayor's report. Mayor Wheeler?
All right. Good evening, Council Vice President Chamberlain, members of the city council. So I just have a couple of slides I want to share with you. So Dave, whenever you're ready, we'll go with the first slide. All right. So as you can see right now, the we are getting ready to start the reconstruction of the HVAC systems. And provide just want to provide you an update that that's well underway. The branch will be closed beginning July 17. And this is a $412,000 award from the state for us to accomplish this work. And there's a there's a lot of details that I have to share with you about all of the things that are wrong, that are wrong with our heating and cooling system. But ultimately, they're going to be repaired. We're going to be able to return this project, this wonderful, wonderful city asset back to the citizens. And it'll actually instead of sweltering in the summer and just freezing in the winter, we're actually going to provide some relief, not only for the the folks who work there and the ones who are using the library, but they can be it'll be able to be used when we have extreme weather conditions. And so again, counsel, just wanted to provide you this update that this project is is underway. Next slide, please. Kitsap Lake Stormwater Treatment. So there's four sections that we will be providing. So the retrofit design is completed. So we have four outfalls. You can see on the slide that will be, you know, where we will be able to capture storm water and and eliminate it in a way where it's it does not end up in the Kitsap Lake. So it'll be dispersed into the ground before going into Kitsap Lake. The reason this is important is stormwater actually contributes to the nutrients that promote the algae bloom. So with this project, this has been one we've been working on for a while. We just need the construction funds, which we expect to receive soon. And then we can actually start with the construction of the outfalls. And there's another project, as you can see on the slide, that's cover 67 acres on Francis Street, again, meant to capture stormwater before it enters into Kitsap Lake, all designed to keep our lake healthy. Next slide, please. So the View Ridge Elementary Safe Routes to School Project. This is coming soon. There's a open house June 27, 4:30 to 6:30 PM at View Ridge Elementary School. I would invite anybody who is interested in improving the safety for our children who must, you know, must work through the walk through the neighborhoods to get to View Ridge to attend. This is a great project. We're excited to get this going. And I just wanted to update you, council and the public on this. And that is it, Dave. Let's see if there's that is it for tonight. So thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we will go to the consent agenda. Thank you, Vice President Chamberlain. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A Claims and Check Register, check numbers 403183 through 403325, and EFT numbers V37635 through V37726, and the grand total amount of $3,827,122.05. Two, regular payroll payouts for pay period ending May 31, 2023, and the amount of $23,815.94. Three, regular payroll for pay period ending June 15, 2023, and the amount of $1,091,287.83. B, minutes of meeting June 7, 2023. C, minutes of study session, June 14, 2023. D, confirm reappointment of Charles Henderson to the CDVG Project Review Committee. E, request for additional extra help on for on-call courtroom bailiff position. F, local agency contract with Northwest Cascade Inc. for the Washington and 11th Roundabout Project and related budget adjustment. G, ordinance number 5477 to amend ordinance number 5464 relating to the City of Bremerton Fiscal Year 2023 Budget. H, agreement with TEC Construction, Inc. for the Equipment Services Interior Remodel and Secure Storage Project. And I Goods and Services Agreement with L2 Systems LLC for Water Systems SCADA Life Cycle Improvements. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda. Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any one of these items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Counselor.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Member Coughlin?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is public recognition. As noted on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any city-related item that is not already listed on tonight's agenda. And that and that now that is, oh, I see what they're saying. Now that it's election season. So please refrain from any comments on political campaigns or ballot measures. Thank you for your patience with that. Please line up at the podium or if participating by Zoom, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. We only ask that you state your name for use in the public record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. We do have a timer system, and that'll be used so that everyone is treated equally. And with that, I'll open up public recognition.
Good evening, council members. My name is Aldo Vey. I am a consultant with National Community Development Services out of Atlanta. But I'm privileged to work here on behalf of the KITA Board of Directors, Aaron Ledem, Board Chair. I'm here for a few public remarks about KITA's initiative entitled One Kitsap. One Kitsap is a multi-year, public-private strategic initiative in the area of economic development that is intended to be aligned with the city, county, and regional comprehensive plans. It is intended to meet Kitsap's oncoming needs and opportunities in economic development. One Kitsap is a new idea. It is intended to be executed in the 2024 through 2028 timeframe. We recognize that the public has long supported KITA. Thank you very much. This initiative is going to invite much additional private sector participation because the benefits of economic development accrue to businesses and citizens alike. KITA is determined to grow an inventory of industrial and commercial space responsibly to acquire 2,500 new and retained jobs for the area consistent with our existing business cluster strengths. What are the benefits? Well, the strategic plan is intentional. How and when we grow is intended to be in concert with the community's desires. We're looking for improved sustainability for the Kitsap economy with participation by all governments, businesses, tribal interests, and nonprofits. Plan growth will grow the production capacity and consumer spending in the area. New output for businesses at the end of five years, when the 2,500 job has started, is expected to be $838 million in new output, $250 million in new consumer spending, and $28 million in new tax revenues at municipal, county, state, and federal levels. Finally, the KITA board appreciates the opportunity for a work session with council members at some date in the near future with information that has been provided to the clerk for your advance information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bevvy. Is there anyone else for public recognition?
Hello, my name is Chris Hughes. My husband and I own a duplex on Fourth Street. Next door to us is a house that we have had major concerns with. It is at 1623 Fourth Street. The gentleman who's been living in this house goes by the name of Skeeter. Has been a house that has been overrun with drug addicts, prostitutes. Has garbage that's been collected in bags in a garbage truck sitting in their back driveway up against the house. And now we have rats, daily sightings of rats. We have been to code enforcement numerous times. We have spoken with the police numerous times. I have written letters to the mayor and to Ian Cohen. And I'm here today because I'm seeking help. We're just kind of at our wits' end. This is the same house where a drug-addicted baby was born a few months ago in a bathtub. Was left for two days until the police came, couldn't get into the property, had to get a warrant to go in and get that baby. And the baby later died of the side effects from being drug addicted. You know, we really hoped that at that time, we would see some help from the city to close down the people that live in this house and get them out of there. It is a it is a health concern at this point and has been for years, but really, they've they've lowered our property and house values. We live in fear because we don't know these people that are coming and going. Everyone on this block has done something to improve their house. We painted, we put in new gardens, we put in fencing. We're doing everything we can to make our houses more beautiful and make Bremerton more beautiful. And yet, this one house is a complete eyesore right across the street from Kiwanis Field, where the children from the Catholic Church come and play every day.
Monsieur, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your public comment.
Really appreciate any help we can get.
Thank you. Next for public recognition.
Good evening. I live at 1613 Fourth Street, two houses down from this place that he was talking about. This is a blight to see it to Bremerton. We've been working on it for no less than two years. There's been all kinds of activity 24 hours a day. These are people that come and go at their will. They park in the middle of the street. They tear down cars, trucks, motorcycles. They have an illegal repair shop going with no EPA standards met at all. There's oil stains on the roadway. They park on the sidewalks. And I was coming down here right just a while ago. They were double parked on Forest Street, blocking the East Lane Road side of Fourth. The city put in a parking lot on Forest Street, narrowed Forest Street. It used to be nice and wide. Now that's narrowed down to about a lane and a half. And these people park in the middle of the road on the sidewalk, double park whenever they want, park in the wrong direction on both sides of the streets. They have no regard to the to the residents of the area. They challenge us all the time by blocking the alley and the street. Or so it seems. They have continuous car shop meets or whatever you want to call them, where they start working. It's nothing uncommon for them to be working at 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. And they don't make it quiet. They have cars racing to and from the area. It seems like it's a well-known time when they leave their doors open on their vehicles that are parked on Forest Street, indicating that there's been a drug drop or a drug pickup. This is something that needs to be taken care of. It's not being taken care of. I would I would think that the EPA would have something to say with all the oil stains in a water runoff, the storm drains.
30 seconds.
Is that time?
You have a few more seconds, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name.
Thanks.
My name? Terry Tell.
Terry Tell, thank you.
Tell, T E L L. I live at 1613 Fourth Street.
Thank you, Mr. Tell.
Been there for over 30 years, and I don't appreciate what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Tell. Is there anybody from administration that would like to respond to any concerns? Okay. Oh. Attorney Fennel?
Sure. This is actually a case we were looking at this week, and we're moving forward with hiring some outside counsel to help with this. There are some complicating factors with regard to the ownership of this particular property. So it's our hope that we can get this into court. So we spoke with a receiver actually yesterday on this.
Thank you, Attorney Fennel. So at this point in time, your your public comment has been exhausted, but you're more than welcome to contact Attorney Fennel by email or speak at a different time. Thank you for your public comment.
Good evening, council. I'm excited to share, oh, David Evans with the Greater Kitsap Chamber of Commerce Chamber. And I'm excited to share about what the Greater Kitsap Chamber and Visitor Center activities are this month. On July 1, the Chamber will celebrate the first anniversary of the merged chambers between Bremerton and Silverdale. I cannot believe it has been a year already. We will share our success at the Wednesday, June 28 Membership Luncheon. Six new board members will join us for a three-year term, and we're excited to share that with the community next week. We will also be presenting our first annual report, which is very exciting. I have also shared with you, the Greater Kitsap Chamber and Visitor Center received a grant from the Port of Seattle to have a bulletin board advertisement in the main terminal during July, August, and September to support tourism in Kitsap County. Sea Tech estimates that over 3 million visitors will see our bulletin board and advertisement. So we're very excited about that. But more importantly, in response to the recent news that the ferry services of between Seattle and Bremerton will not be restored until 2024, the Greater Kitsap Chamber is sending yet another letter on behalf of local businesses impacted by this service. As you may remember, last fall, we joined the mayor in sending a letter to the governor about this issue, and we had over 200 businesses sign off on our letter. We are hoping to again add to that group. So we have started that campaign. And if you would like to add your name to the list, you may do so at hello@greaterkitsapchamber.com. But the letter will emphasize that this is an unacceptable reality. Bremerton is the economic hub of Kitsap County, and we deserve better service for our citizens, for our local businesses, and most importantly, our tourists who get trapped here, but then they don't come. And that is an economic engine for the visitor center. Enough is enough. And we want to, we deserve an answer to a straight for straightforward question. When will the service begin? We hope that you will add your names to the growing list to show support for this. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. For just a moment, I'd like to check to see if there's anybody online, public comment. Brian Anderson, you're next up.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to provide public input tonight as I was I heard that there was a hearing for proposed changes to fireworks sales and proposed changes. Is this the time?
Thank you for asking for that clarifying. Thank you for asking that clarifying question. No, this is not the right.
Sorry. Okay, my bad.
So will you stay tuned and offer?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson. Next up, we have Cynthia Brady.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Brady, and I live in Bremerton. What I was concerned about was I've been going to different events by the Marvin Williams Center. And I noticed that there's a lot of homeless population out there in that area. And I was wondering why the city won't put out garbage containers or even like little bathroom stalls or something out there for those people since they're not going anywhere, at least make it where it could be presentable in that area with the name Martin Luther King Jr. name on that street. I just want to know why it has to be someplace for everybody to come and wreak havoc or have that place looking like it's looking. The city need to be doing better with the money that they have, and they need to clean that street up and not just push those people out, but find someplace for those people to go. I know it's not a one-size-fits-all problem, but we need to find something together as a city and a community to do better by that street and by that community center that sits there. There's kids that go there to that community center, and there's things going on there. And the word in the street is that the mayor moved them from certain places and then moved them over there on that street, which I don't know if that's true or not, but if it is, that's kind of foul play for people that attend that community center and have children that attend that community center. I'm really concerned about the health condition and like the lady was saying earlier about rats and other situations that may be a plague to that area. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your public comment, Ms. Brady. Next up online, we have Travis Marigan. Mr. Marigan, can you hear us?
There we go. Got me?
Yep.
Thank you very much. I'm calling in today to urge city council, the mayor, public works to be bold. There's many items on the calendar this year, including comprehensive plan, transportation improvement program, et cetera. And there's opportunities to stay to the status quo, which for the last 50, 60, 70 years has put houses way out in the birds with cars to drive to them.
Mr. Marigan, and I apologize for interrupting you, but are you here to comment on the transportation improvement plan?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Commenting on boldness. In all of these areas, please emphasize transit, emphasize dense housing, and emphasize walkable streets and bikeable streets. The safe streets of Bremerton is behind you, and we're watching, and and we're gonna do our best to support all of you who are doing your best to turn Bremerton into a more walkable, livable place. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Marigan. We'll return back to the room. Is there anybody else who'd like to join us for public recognition? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Walter, Navy Arts City. I came with a different plan to speak about something else tonight, and that's not happening. I want to amplify what Cynthia Brady shared. My intention was to bring some folks who are living on the street and wanted to come and speak to about their needs. But like happens, their lives are complicated, and there were things that got in the way of it for tonight, but I hope in two weeks' time they'll be here. And in the meantime, I thought of something personal I wanted to share with you. After Juneteenth on Saturday, a wonderful festival. I was feeling great, and I'm going home. And my disabled daughter was ill and needed to go to the ER. And my heart sank because, well, she was sick, but also it meant going to the ER in Silverdale, St. Michael's. I've had lots of experiences there, bringing family members and other people that I was supporting to the ER and imagining my daughter unable to speak for herself, waiting as long as I knew she would in the ER. I didn't want to do it, and I thought of St. Anthony's. And I recognized that it's a reflection of my privilege that I knew that St. Anthony's was an option and that I could take her there and have her seen. My experience there has been the polar opposite of what I've experienced at St. Michael's. And I know you are not in charge there, but I'm urging you to do everything you can to help improve our situation when we have no choice. When an ambulance picks someone up, they're going to take them to Silverdale rather than to Gig Harbor. And I'm just kind of shocked at what I experienced there, the same Catholic health system to have such a different way of providing support for people. It's 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 unacceptable, and I feel lucky. But I would like to know that everyone in Bremerton can experience what my daughter has been experiencing at St. Anthony's for the last four or five days. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public recognition.
Jane Ravolowski, I live here in town. I would like to also discuss the lack of toilet facilities for our unhoused people. Back in November, December, council approved $10,000 to get some portable toilets in. There's nothing there. I under I've been told, I don't know if it's true or not, that when we had dumpsters out there that a neighboring community was using it for their own trash. I don't know if that's true, but maybe we could come up with a plan where two days a week waste management comes through and picks up a couple garbage cans because most of the folks there are are trying to keep their area clean. There are some people who have mental health illnesses that they're suffering from, but most of the people don't want to live in a mess, and they don't want people angry with them. But we need to spend that $10,000 and go rent a couple of toilets for them and get some trash cans out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Nakia, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but my understanding is there is a weekly garbage pickup that does occur on MLK. Are you comfortable speaking on that briefly? Thank you very much.
Yeah, our our street crew goes out there every day, every weekday, and they do kind of a minor pickup every day. And they do a major pickup on, I think it's Fridays and Tuesdays, I believe, and we get dump trucks. And we get dump trucks uh full of garbage out of there at least once a week. So we are picking it up. Um, it ends up getting uh piled on the south side of the street and we go in there with um backhoes and dump trucks and we pick it up. So we're it. If we weren't doing that, it would look a lot worse.
Thank you, Director Naki. Next up for public comment, public recognition.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name's Dave Cooper. And I came here to um talk about the Martin Luther King Road. Um, it is a disgrace, I think, for uh the name and also for the Marvin Williams building there. Uh, if you have um not walked that road or driven on that road, I would suggest you do that so you can get a a a glimpse really of um what's going on. Um, my family and I, we uh buy distressed homes and we just recently got a call from one of the owners of the homes there. And uh they um they're gonna, they want to sell, they can't. It is it's a rental for them and um the renter is no longer safe. There is a lady there with a knife on her, on his porch. Uh, it just bad environment with some bad citizens there and um I I I felt bad for the person who wants to sell because that wasn't their plan. And here they are, property value is going and literally into the toilet and and um I I just, I I felt bad for that person. And uh I I know that there's a lot of issues with the whole, what do we do with people with with some stuff? But uh the last meeting you guys rallied together uh for the eateries and the street uh part uh seat, street uh eating uh areas. And I was, I thought how wonderful it was to to witness that in person. And I thought we we need, quite frankly, we need a little bit more rallying together on on some of these issues. And I just, I I just, I'm just coming before you now to say that I I hope that you guys would um not allow um what's going on down there in some fashion. I I it just, it just breaks my heart to think about what's going on, so thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Next up for public recognition.
Hi, I'm uh Jim Klein. I'm the vice president of the Charleston Business District. Um, I guess I'm a little choked up when we hear about problems in Bremerton. Uh, and I just know that the council takes this to heart. I know that uh last night we had the mayor attend uh our meeting, our Charleston Business District meeting, uh along with Michael Goodnow on um Zoom. Um, and I can't imagine that we could ask for a better mayor than somebody who takes the time to come to our meeting and we had a lot of discourse, a lot of conversation. And out of that, you saw really uh the power of citizenship at work that in spite of having problems, if we can fix things as a group down in Charleston, if we can contact Bremerton One for issues and have Tom and his crew out and uh the what the Parks Department has done, I know that uh we'll be able to address the issues of homelessness. It might take time and it'll certainly take some additional effort on all of our parts, but the heart in Bremerton, when you talk about where you live, my heart lives here. And I think that's true of everybody that's here tonight. And I would encourage you to continue to have that commitment. And when I think about some of the people that I've got to know since I've moved back here, uh Ron and Faye Fleemaster are examples of people who give more back to this community than they'll ever take. Our meeting was hosted last night. Uh, Faye wasn't available, so she asked me to run the meeting. And of course, Ron is there after working all day, doing great work and uh and serving our community, uh setting things up and making sure that McGavin's Bakery provided the great cookies that we enjoyed. Um, and uh there were merchants there, there were people from the community. And out of that, we kind of struggled with, uh as you know, we provided a list of about sixteen different projects that we'd like to see happen. We narrowed it down to the top two. The top two are going to be the first being the Wykow Overpass mural and the second being improving the crosswalks, which leads to safe streets, leads to people being out in public. And when you think about that, it's the socializing uh that's really important. And in closing, let me just tell you about this. This is from Miranda Panero that owns Cafe Corbal. She describes Bremerton, she's committed to building Bremerton as a great community. There's a vibe and work with vendors uh that are local. Uh, she does that all the time. She says, we love coffee and we're wild about Bremerton. It's artsy, it's crafty, it's navy, it's sassy, and it's weird, but it's a good weird.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you for tonight and all that you do.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lisa Lachuga. I am the branch manager of the Downtown Bremerton Library. I al- I'm also the chair of the Housing and Homelessness Coalition. I'm not representing them today, though. I'm just being a citizen of Bremerton. And uh the library, which needs the uh an HVAC replacement, which I'm so grateful that you agreed to pass and that Mayor Willer had supported as well. It's gonna be a great investment in our community. However, the closure is going to impact and exacerbate what I'm already observing in these roles. Um, I was meeting with the Housing and Homelessness Coalition today and I explained that the library provides computers and people actually search for services. They use printing and fax for services, they use wifi, they charge their phones at the library. Um, they find information to navigate systems, including our transportation system and and when we get this HVAC, we will be a cooling center, but currently we are not. Um, and we, most importantly, provide a restroom to people who need it. Um, that's going to disappear. And when I talked to our partners and said, who can provide these things? There was near silence and I invite you to watch the conduit podcast because there was not a lot of options for people. And I think about many of our unsheltered citizens and I'm concerned about them. And by observation, they may uh meet your idea of of what that stereotype is, but many are elder with issues so complex, whether it's mental health, disability, uh incontinence, and they cannot find housing because their issues are so complex and they still come to the library. And I would say, if I could simplify what is being spoken here, people need shelter and that is complex, but more immediately, they need restrooms. And so I thank you, Council. I've never seen public comment like this, but I'm super excited about Bremerton. Jane, I don't know if you know me, but I watch you and I really like your comments. Um, but just thank you all, thank you for your participation and hopefully we can figure a way to resolve this issue. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor, for trying to make Bremerton as best as it can be. I know it's a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Lachuga. I have a brief question. Mayor Wheeler, in your mayor's report, you mentioned that we're closing down on a certain date. Do we have a timeline that the library will be back open? Thank you for your grace and putting you on the spot today. Great, I'll let you.
Yes, so um council, council vice president, three months is what we're we're looking for closure. Closer time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Next up for public recognition.
Mary Lou Long, longtime resident of Bremerton. Once again, I come before the council and the citizens gathered here, which I'm very, very excited to see that there are so many people coming to council meetings and expressing their needs. We, we don't want a council that lives in a vacuum. We want you to hear what we need and what we feel is important. So appreciate everybody that came. And with that, I will do what I've been doing for some time now, that is trying to instill in the hearts and minds of our council members the importance of recognizing who we are. We're Americans. We live in the United States of America and our flag represents all of the values that this country it stands for and grants us in our constitution. So with that, I would like to invite you to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, which I would like you to reinstate as part of the formal opening of public meetings on a regular basis. So with that, anyone who would like to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And um as far as the bathroom situation for the library, I think maybe the mayor could have included a facility for that three-month period outside, like in a construction zone, which they usually do, so that people can use a bathroom that they would normally use in the library. And that should be part of the process of developing that HVAC uh contractor program. Anyway, I could go on with some of the other things that were uh said, but I'll just leave it at that. And I wish you have a very nice evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online for public comment? Thank you. Is there anybody else here who'd like to be publicly recognized? So with that, I will close public recognition and move on to general business. So the next item that we have up for general business is um ordinance number five, four, seven, eight. Uh, and we'll hear about that. Um, Ms. Hoover will speak on that in just a moment and give us the description. But before we go into that, I just wanna um just kind of um remind you or folks out there that this is um and and I'm that we're gonna be discussing specifically uh about Washington State Legislature for District and Qualified Municipal Judges' salaries and benefits. So this is on the position and the acceptance of grant funds. And there are a couple of other options that are not listed on our agenda bill. We have a myriad of options. We have three options that were mentioned on page one fifteen of our packet. We also have the option to take no action. Um, at this time, we also have an option to postpone indefinitely. And so in addition to the three, this is for counselors and for members of the public, uh, these are potential options that we're gonna be considering making motions on or not making motions on after we hear from public recognition. And we have, I'm sorry, Ms. Hoover, would you like to read our?
This is item six B, ordinance number fifty-four seventy-eight, to adjust and set the annual compensation for the municipal court judge. Our presenter tonight is Municipal Court Judge Tracy Flood.
Good evening. I would like to make a correction to the comments that were made by the chair. The background and history of this presentation comes from legislation that passed in two thousand and five. That information was provided to city council this evening on page six. The city of Bremerton historically has been a part of this fund program. It has been being referred to as a grant time and time again, but it is a fund that was created in two thousand and five, when legislation was passed. The certification was done in January. So the option to postpone indefinitely would potentially set the city up for some liability as previously discussed, because the funds, as I handed out at city council, have been being received since two thousand and seven. A part of receiving those funds historically was the commitment for the city of Bremerton to do what was set out in the statute. This court has come before the city council on numerous occasions, asking for this to be corrected by code as required in receipt of those funds. If you look at the receipts that I provided on each of them, it sets out that the funds that have been transferred to the treasurer for the city of Bremerton quarterly is for the Trial Court Improvement Program funds. Doesn't say grant. You've previously asked the court to provide you with what the law was. And I did that. So the pages are double-sided. The funds have been being received historically and as the status quo. When we were here in January, the city attorney's office assistant city attorney, Mike Orea, emailed to the city council. His email specifically stated that going forward pursuant to RCW two point five six point zero three zero twenty-two B, I would recommend that this section two point six two point zero three five of the BMC Code be amended to reflect the eligibility requirement listed in the statute that the city has established by ordinance that a full-time judge is compensated at a rate equivalent to at least ninety-five percent, but no more than one hundred percent of a district court judge's salary. That was the requirement that was set in the statute back in two thousand and five. It was said, and there's emails that have gone back and forth from the previous administration or administrator that said time and time again to ALC, this is being done. This is being done for compliance with this law. So this is something that again, with the certification that was done in January, the July first presentation that is on the agenda bill gives you three options. Those are the three options that need to be acted on along with the BMC Code change. It's not, um, and the previous court administrator, Don Nelson, again, presented to ALC that this was being taken care of. They assured Ms. Watson that this was being taken care of. The challenge, of course, is you're looking at it from a standpoint of, is this something we can opt out of? Is this something we can change for this year?
I apologize, just one moment. So public comment, public recognition is over. Uh, so for those who are interested in making additional comments, you're welcome to to write in or email in. Um, I'm sorry for the interruption, Judge Flood, please continue.
Thank you. For this year, the certification was discussed at the January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. Court came before city council and said that this is a certification that's being required. Historically, we previously found that there was one certification done by the previous mayor that they had been done um in other courts by HR, um by the court administrator. But it's one in which it says that this city has placed a commitment to following what is set out in the statute as the law. Historically, it's been presented every July first since two thousand and seven, is my understanding. Unlike the mayor and other salaries for city employees, the court is the executive branch. When you look at the salary for the executive branch, there's the statutes that set it as an elected court participating in this program. It also sets out what happens with those that are part-time. We talked about the salary commission. But today's request is one that was put forth previously by the city attorney. Again, Mike Orea saying that this change needs to happen. It's been presented on numerous occasions that this needs to happen. And the agenda bill is not a request with the judicial branch coming in and saying, it's time for a pay raise. This is the statute and the way that salaries are looked at on a statewide basis, pulling in the municipal courts through the statute of the Senate.
Thank you, Judge Flood. Was that all of your presentation?
You you asked, I believe, Finance Director Riley about the amount of monies that have been received because they're working on a finance program. The receipts were what I were able to provide to you, which showed you that the dollar amount changes. It's not one set dollar amount as to what's being received over the period of time, but it does change. But often averages, I don't have the full history, but that was not available.
And I apologize, we did not receive any receipts.
Yeah, yes, you did. The stapled copies that I gave to you that are the receipts that are sent this document here.
And so just, okay, and so here's, and I'm going to be real honest with you because here's the problem of bringing us something to a briefing. We don't have time to review it. We've got, we are already discussing.
Director Riley for this information, and I was told that he couldn't get it to you. So these are email receipts that I had available and the finance department was able to get to me today.
Thank you for providing those for us for further investigation, which we're really unable to do right now here in this moment because it's already the meeting time. So, but this is going to be helpful for future.
What I will say is this information has been provided to you in the agenda bill of the dollar amounts. And these receipts just confirm that the city treasurer has directly received these months.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else you'd like to add to the presentation or will that be the conclusion?
So I'm asking that the agenda bill be approved as presented with option A, B, or C. There was previous discussion that it remained the status quo, which is option A. The change would come in effect with the certification that was done in January for July one.
Very much. Is there any member of the public that would, that would wish to comment on this item? Okay, is there anybody online? Fantastic. Do we have Robert Harris?
Evening, everyone, or afternoon. I'd just like to know, it seems like there's been a lot of lag time in regards to getting this processed. You know, why is there such, there seems to be such hesitation on behalf of the city council to get this addressed? I mean, the statute seems pretty straightforward and clear.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Because this is public recognition, it's not a time really to reply, but you're welcome to tune in to our previous study session, recording to find out a little bit more about what we discussed on the issue. Is there anybody else with, for public recognition? Thank you. And seeing none, I will go to the council for a motion.
I move to postpone indefinitely.
I will second. Which means we don't have a time to discuss because there's a lot that I would like to respond to. But I guess we'll have to save that. Parliamentarian Hoover, is that correct? We wouldn't be discussing if we're postponing indefinitely.
I don't believe so. If we're postponing indefinitely, then there is no, we're going to default to our parliamentarian on that. It's not debatable or amendable? Oh, it is. Okay, according to Jurassic Parliament, it says it is debatable. So we have a motion on the floor. Counselor Mochler, you're up first. Does your microphone not work right now? There we go.
Magic. Judge Flood, with all due respect, honest to gosh, with a lot of due respect, what we discussed at last week's study session was with what difficulty this council had raised the salary of the mayor. Looking at the fact that forty percent of Birmerton households make less than forty thousand, your current salary is a hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. That's one of the very highest salaries in this city. And for that reason, it does not seem to us correct as stewards of the welfare of the people of the city of Birmerton to to take this opportunity to raise your salary so as to continue receiving the trial court improvement funds. And therefore, we're, it's my motion to choose to postpone this indefinitely while remaining extremely respectful of your service.
And I'm going to go ahead to Counselor Dennehy.
Thank you. You know, my, my comments are not my comments are not about the salary raising. I think you know from study session, I was actually quite supportive of creating a very attractive salary to encourage, you know, a jurist to, to, you know, run for the court. My problem is the presentation is very similar to the presentation we received earlier in the year that misstates some RCWs. This is, and I want the public to be really clear. We would be approving this in order to be receiving twenty-three-ish thousand dollars worth of grant improvement funds for the court. Nowhere in the RCW does it state that the state legislature sets a municipal court salary. This is something that I'm, I'm actually really surprised was being put forward again. The RCW states, if you want this funding, you need to be at ninety-five percent of a superior court salary. But I believe even, I'm sorry, district court, thank you. Attorney Fennell even provided some case law to kind of go off of this last time. So this is not a requirement of the legislature. City council has the purview to decide what the municipal court salary should be. In order to receive the twenty-three thousand dollar funding, we need to have your compensation or the judge's compensation at ninety-five percent of that. And what I did in study session, it was a quick, easy mathematical formula for me. Yeah, let's raise the salary that increases the likelihood of, you know, a really great judge staying in the position, really great jurists trying to go for the position. That makes sense to me on a financial standpoint because the raise that we were talking about, I believe you're asking the court to receive a seven thousand dollar raise, but we get a twenty-three thousand dollar grant for court improvement. For me, looking at taxpayer money, that's a, what, twelve thousand, whatever that number is, I'm bad at math, net gain. What I'm having a problem with is saying you need to do this because the RCW demands that you do that. That is not what the statute states. The statute states that municipal court judge salaries are set by municipalities, the city council. But in order to receive this grant funding, we would need to have the judge's salary at ninety-five percent. Honestly, as an officer of a court, the court myself, I am getting troubled by the, the way that this is being presented to us. That is my issue. This, and, and I think we, we hammered things out in, in study session. And I was actually, yeah, let's, let's do this. It makes sense from a financial sense. The reason that I'm seconding this motion to table is because, one, we have two council members out. But there was also an email from Judge Doctor that wanted us to look into some cases and the amount of kind of traffic that's been going through the court. But also I'm looking at the salary schedule, and if we tie it to the RCW, the next pay raise in twenty twenty twenty-four would put the district court judge salary at two seventeen, which would put the municipal court judge salary again at a pretty significant bump. And again, I think as Council Member Mochler states, the municipal court judge is one of the highest paid city employees with taxpayer dollars, as they should be. But we want to do that in a way that is open to the public and really truly saying what it is, because saying that the RCW requires us to do that, that, that's not correct.
I'm not saying the RCW. I said the Senate bill, which is what I provided to you, and it has the bullets, page six of the Senate bill.
I have six right here.
Page six of the Senate bill sets out the bullets for the fund. We, this city council in January certified that they were a part of the program, saying that the position would be at ninety-five percent. So I'm only giving the history.
So, so the, the, the other statement that concerns me is that not raising this salary would put the city at liability. I don't understand that because this seems to be that, you know, we have emails saying, yes, you can take deferred compensation into account. You can take the base salary into account. The new salary is this July first, right? So I don't, I'm not seeing a retroactive liability. I, I don't think that was brought up at study session. So I'm, I'm, I'm quite confused.
So the salaries for the year.
I don't want to get into a, a long debate. I'm kind of getting, I hear my chair is going to cut me off soon. But I want it to be clear why we need to kind of take a little bit more time to look at this. This is my personal reason for, for waiting. I, I feel like the way it's being presented, saying that this is required by law, that's not correct. This is required if we want to continue receiving these grant funds.
But you've already received the funds are, are in the process of being received because when I came in January, you could have said in January, no, we don't want to do this. And I wouldn't have done the certification. But in January, you said you did want to do this with the certification for the year. So we, we've already certified to ALC for the year. That's where I'm saying potential liability because we made, in January, we made the certification for the, the year.
But, but the, but the timetable would actually change the salary in.
It changes every July.
Got you. So, so half of the funds would be in compliance, and you're saying these other half would not be in compliance. Am I?
That's where it can potentially, if you're tabling it indefinitely, can become an issue of back pay because they're sending the funds based on the certification that you've already committed to. That's why I said potential.
I'm going to go ahead and put a bookmark, and I'm going to defer to Attorney Fennell on this item. Are we, do we have any kind of liability right now with the grant and accepting the grant funding? We had a long conversation about the ninety-five percent being met with deferred compensation. So my understanding is we don't have an issue with the liability.
Sure. So the I don't recall the council actually taking action in January.
They sit.
I apologize. I don't recall. And this is a new, I guess, angle on this.
And, and I would have. It's not an angle. It's, what they asked me to bring to them was additional information. So, and they said that in, in the study session, you said we'd been back and back and coming back on several different timeframes. And then I'm, I'm referencing it January because you asked me the questions about why was the language of the law being used? Because of the statute. So I wanted that to be clarified. Okay, so, and I say the statute, meaning the House Bill SB that I provided to you.
For providing that to us.
That, that was the clarification.
Thank you, Judge Flood. I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and call on President Coughlin, who is attending online.
Thank you, Vice President Chamberlain, just, just council member tonight. I want to reiterate some comments here as I hear them. Right, the, the trade-off is, I understand it, is if we keep pace with the municipal court judge's salary at ninety-five percent, we get this trial court improvement funds. If we don't, we don't get the trial court improvement fund. So our decision as a council, looking at fiscal, like, sorry, fiscal responsibility and taxpayer dollars is, does this make sense to raise the salary by a certain amount to get these trial court improvement funds? I, I want to be clear. The judge's salary has been at the ninety-five percent threshold to receive those funds going forward. That's what we hashed out in January. And that it was clear that at that time, yes, it met the ninety-five percent threshold from AOC. So now we're looking at, do we, do we raise it to keep receiving these funds? And one thing I asked for in study session that I believe Judge Flood alluded to was how much trial court improvement funds have we gotten year after year? Right now, we're looking at a total increase of salaries plus compensation of at least twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Now, we get twenty-three thousand, five hundred trial court improvement funds. But my concern is that if that amount of trial court improvement fund money hasn't been increasing a substantial amount year after year, then it's not keeping pace with the ninety-five percent threshold in salary. And there's a certain point, and I, I don't know if we passed it or not, I don't know how the data, but there's a certain point where we're no longer getting enough money in trial court improvement funds to offset the extra salary. So, so that to me is what I need to vote for this. I would need to know that the trial court improvement funds are actually increasing at a really substantial rate that offsets the salary increase. And, and right now, the only data I have in front of me that was included in the packet is just that this is an increase of almost thirteen thousand dollars. And we get twenty-three, five as a result in trial court improvement funds. But I would highly doubt that the previous year, we say only got ten thousand in trial court improvement funds. So the trial court improvement funds are only increasing by a little bit each year, but this salary is increasing by a lot. To me, it's not fiscally responsible to keep increasing the salary. So if we forego these trial court improvement funds, I think it's a net fiscal benefit to the city. But again, I don't, I don't have the exact data, but just on what I do have, I'm not seeing it. So that's it for my comments. Thank you, Vice President Chamberlain.
Thank you, President Coughlin. And Attorney Fennell has some clarification based on, we did not take action on anything in January.
I'm, I'm trying to look at the minutes. I, I don't recall us taking any action on the judge's salary this year. I thought that the judges brought the the item was on the agenda, but I thought that the council did not take any action on it. And I think the last time that the council passed, so I, I just want to clarify a couple of things. Judge Flood talked about Michael Reyes email. If you look, and I think everyone might have what the judge has provided on page six, that, that section is codified in the RCWs. It's it, it goes on for a long time, but if you, if you turn back a few pages, you'll see that it eventually begins at RCW two point five six oh three oh is where those sections are. And if you go to section six, it says the city has established, or page six, section twenty, sub B, sub two. When we were reviewing this, the last time we noticed that the section stated, the city has established by ordinance. And our review indicated that the council had been setting this by like a resolution or something like that. And so it was our recommendation that going forward, that rather than setting it by a resolution, that the council set that by ordinance. So I just want to make sure that that was the, the basis for Mr. Reyes' recommendation that if the court, if the council wants to go forward, that you do so by an ordinance. And that's why Mr. Reyes drafted the ordinance. It's attached to the packet. And so that's that, that reference. With regard to the, the other point that the judge made about the council taking action, I, I really, that was, I, I need to look at minutes to make a decision. But in my understanding, that did not happen. And I believe Mike Riley, did you say had something that he would?
I'd like to go ahead and call on Director Riley, if he has his hammer. I'd like to go ahead and call on Director Riley, if he has his hammer.
I, I did. I put it back down, but, uh, I did want to comment on the, the receipts. Um, so it has been pretty static. Uh, the receipts for the trial court improvement fund, it's actually between sixteen to twenty-three thousand dollars a year. And it kind of goes up and down. It's not a steady increase. I want to comment on that.
Thank you, Director Riley. Um, Counselor Frye, Frye, would you like to comment on this item?
Just going to reiterate everything everybody said. You know, I, we are fiscal stewards. And it's been a bit haphazard. And, uh, I, I need some clarity. And, uh, I, I think that President Coughlin made an excellent point, uh, in long-term fiscal accountability. Uh, and we have to keep that in mind, uh, and also the message that this sends to our community. So, um, yeah, I really don't have any further comment. I said enough last week.
Thank you, Counselor Frye. Uh, round, uh, may I go ahead and make a quick comment? Is that okay? No, it's okay. We're just going to do a little, we're going to do our first round, and I'll go back to you, Counselor Dennehy. So is this the third time that you've come before us asking for an increase in your salary since you've been elected as judge?
I am not asking for an increase in my salary. I'm asking for if the city is choosing to continue with the trial court improvement fund.
Okay. Thank you for that correction, too, because calling it a grant was wrong, but calling it a fund is the correct terminology, and I appreciate that correction. Is this the third time that you've come to us with a concern that your salary is not high enough?
I have not come to you with a concern that my salary isn't high enough. I've come to you again with the language that is set out in the trial court improvement fund and asked if you want to continue into that program. When I came to you in January, the council could have voted then to not continue into the program for the year. It's always the council's decision.
Thank you very much. So, um, it sounds to me like, um, we don't have enough information, and I can't speak for everybody. I certainly am not provided with the information in a timely manner when I get it at fifteen after, fifteen minutes into a briefing. Uh, that is just not enough time for me to be able to process new information, and that's just not how we can operate in a fiscally responsible way. So for me to, to approve an item tonight with information I got fifteen minutes ahead of time is inappropriate. That's just not how we do business. That's how not, that's not how I do business. Counselor Dennehy?
Yeah, and Judge Flood, I I remember, I, I remember the study session. It, it might not have been taken action on, but I do remember us saying, and I think I might have been the one that said it, and we'll, we'll look at, um, minutes, but was like, hey, come, come back to us in July. The reason we asked that, based on my recollection, was again, the increase in the salary was being presented in a way that stated we had to do this, the law is requiring us to do this, versus if we want these funds, then we need to make sure that we're at the ninety-five percent. And that's what I thought this, this presentation was going to be. I, you know, getting, getting this late, for me, you know, I'm, I'm an attorney. I can look at this really quickly and say, okay, this is what this states. Obviously, the rest of the council needs to digest it. I probably need to digest it a little bit more as well. But I think the best route to go is to present in a way that says this is the funds that you want for trial court improvement. If the city wants those funds for trial court improvement, this is the ninety-five percent threshold that we have to make. These are our options to do it. That is different than saying the law requires us to, to do that based on those RCWs. And, and so I, I'm, I'm just trying to state that in a future session, and I, and I hope there is, you know, a future session and that we bring this, um, there needs to be a delineation between this is a thing that you can do to receive this grant or these funds, whatever we want to call it, from the state for trial court improvement versus you are out of compliance with the law, and you need to do this right now.
I have never said that you are out of compliance with the law. Please don't mistake anything that I've said.
Of course.
What the agenda bill clearly says is that this is on, and it's come on every July first for the last fifteen-plus years, when Judge Doctor was the previous judge. It came on every July first. It seems and I'll say retaliatory, that this is continuing to be seen as me saying it's a requirement. What it's saying is that a part of the trial court improvement funds, and it lays it out there. This has been acknowledged by previous administrations to continue to be a part of this program. When I came in January, I said, I will not do this certification if you do not want to continue. Listen to the record. You, as a city council, said, yes, you wanted to continue. Now, there's a certification that July first, the ninety-five percent is changing. When the certification already has been done for this year, that's what I'm bringing to your attention as potentially liability. Potentially liability, because in January, you gave the okay. The certification was done based on the statements that yes, you're continuing to have the salary at ninety-five percent of the district court's salary to receive the funds that were set out by statute that are adopted in the RCW. That's the statement that's being made. That's the statement that continues to be made. Maybe you, you're, as far as when you're it keeps moving back to this being one of the highest paid positions. It's an elected position that receives funds from the state for salary purposes. And there is the Washington Commission on Jud- Salaries that we've talked about that was created to look at judges' salaries as a whole. Nobody had said that the municipality doesn't have its prayer view to participate in the program or not participate in the program. In two thousand and seven, from two thousand and seven forward, this city has participated in that program. The certification in January was done based on you saying, and Ms. Chamberlain did say, let's look at if this is going to be feasible going forward. That feasibility would be then looked at for twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-three, because in twenty twenty-three, we've already had the conversation to do the certification. The certification was done based on the information coming to us in, in, in January. So that's what I'm saying as far as there, there needs to be a, a big picture in saying, am I coming in to say, pay me more, give me this, give me that? No. That's not what this judge is saying. I have never said that. And please don't even make that accusation.
Thank you, Judge Flood.
Absolutely. And, and just final to, to close that out. I think it's pretty clear that there's some communication breakdown, and I think part of that does have to do with um, getting things a little bit last minute. And I think tabling so that we can digest makes the most sense, because a, a, again, I just think that there's a disconnect between the presentation and our understanding or what the actual requirements are. And, and so that's why I'm supporting.
Thank you. Counselor Frye?
I just want for the record to make, to clarify, this is a, a funding program through the state for a trial court improvement program that we've been participating in since two thousand and five. I think at some point, council needs to ask the question, i- it has our trial court been improving? And, uh, is that a qualification for accepting these funds? Um, we certainly don't have to accept funds if we find that they're not having any impact in improving, uh, the program. Um, there are current concerns about this court. And, uh, I'm, I'm nowhere near.
Thank you, Ms. Denise, for that comment.
So.
So again, very retaliatory. Thank you.
So is there any other counselor that would like to make a comment? Yes, Counselor Mockler.
Thank you, Vice President Chamberlain. Um, I found President Coughlin's argument really persuasive. If the, if the money that we are getting from the trial court improvement funds is not, you know, is increasing incrementally, and the amount that the judge's salary would increase is increasing geometrically, um, then it doesn't, it doesn't make fiscal sense to continue with this program. We have a great deal of information that's been presented to us. Those of us who are not lawyers are, are, you know, kind of scratching our heads about it. And therefore, um, I, I'm not sure about the parliamentary way to say, let's call for the question. But if anyone knows that way, that is what I suggest.
And I'm gonna, uh, thank you. I, I would like to hear from, uh, President Coughlin once more, and then I have one more comment to make, and and then if that's all right, I'll call for the question.
Thank you, Vice President Chamberlain. I'll, I'll keep it real brief. Um, yeah, hearing that the amount of trial court improvement funding has been basically stagnant, there are all sorts of incentives across public works, across different, you know, departments to do action acts, and in return, you get this amount of money. Um, and there's other examples where that, those programs have not kept pace. It was established, not updated. So, um, yeah, I'm, and I'm also looking at the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four salary schedule from the Washington Citizens Commission of Salaries for Elected Officials, and, and it looks like um, the judge salaries are, are set to go up another four to five percent, um, by July twenty twenty-four. So, um, you know, if the administrative office of the courts wants to take another look at this program and up the amount of trial court, um, funding, I'd encourage them to, but, um, at this point, we could set municipal court judge's salary at, say, a hundred thousand. We wouldn't get the trial court improvement money. We would save probably over fifty thousand that could be reinvested in the court in other ways. I'm not proposing that. I think that would be much too low a salary for this position. But I just, yeah, I want to say we, we have options. I am not seeing a financial justification to increase it, just to continue getting this trial court, uh, improvement money. Thank you.
Thank you, President Coughlin. So I just have a couple of final, uh, statements. There was, there was a purpose in me asking about the three times, and, and that wasn't meant to be accusatory in any way. It was meant to bring attention to the first time that, um, that the court brought a request in, which I believe we approved. And then the second time it was brought, uh, there was a lot of discussion. There was some thoughtful discussion um, about whether or not to change the compensation. Um, and we had already gotten clarification from the powers that be that it wasn't required to raise it any higher, that we were meeting the ninety-five percent standard. And so this third time, uh, coming to us, it doesn't feel like anything has, has really changed. Um, we have not received, uh, any further, um, word from from the courts that we, you know, the higher ups, that we need to increase this. Everything that the municipal court judge has come to us and asked for, we have approved. I, I'd be hard pressed, and all y'all would be hard pressed to find any example of any requests that the court has made of city council and budgetary item that we have denied. We have given and given and given for staffing, for, uh, equipment upgrades. We've approved more FTEs. Um, we've approved salary increases for the other, uh, folks there. This is a very small amount, um, and I just do not think that this is the time, nor do we have the information to, um, to make this change in the salary schedule. And, and I feel very comfortable as, um, as somebody in my fiduciary responsibility of finding ways to cover whatever's needed for our court system with our general fund. That's, we're going to do that. We're going to help you out in whatever way we can to cover those costs without having to accept this, these trial court improvement funds. That's where I'm sitting with it. I can only speak for myself. And with that, uh, I'm going to call for the question, please. So this is for a motion to postpone indefinitely, ordinance number fifty-four seventy-eight, to adjust and set the annual compensation for the municipal court judge. Is that correct?
Do you agree that that's the motion?
That's the title of the
Oh, Counselor Mockler?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Frye?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion path passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'm going to call a brief, uh, five-minute recess. I bring the meeting back to order. Next up on the agenda are public hearings. We have item seven A. Ms. Hoover?
Seven A, Public Hearing and Resolution Number three-three-five-eight to adopt the twenty twenty-four CDBG Home Policy Plan. Presenter tonight is CDBG Programs Administrator Sarah Linum.
Thank you, city council members, uh, for allowing me to, the opportunity to present this evening. I am bringing forward the twenty twenty-four CDBG and Home Policy Plan.
Uh, just, just for a moment here, do we have Coughlin online? Okay, so I just want to make sure we have Quorum. We're missing one member. We're going to be, there's going to be a flex, uh, today. Thank you.
Uh, this document serves as the kicking off point for our competitive funding process for the upcoming program year for both the Community Development Block Grant and home funds, which we receive from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The document is updated annually and serves as our guiding principles on how we utilize the funds available to us and provides guidance to applicants on items such as eligibility, the funding allocation process, and information on any regulatory requirements and local policy decisions. The plan also details our funding priorities for both CDBG and home funds. Uh, funding priorities will remain the same from the previous year. There are a couple of minor changes, uh, to, which include some additional requirements for applicants, which I'll go over shortly. Next slide, please. Uh, for the council this evening, the policy plan adoption kicks off the program year for applicants wishing to apply for CDBG or Home. The document was released for a fifteen-day comment period, and no comments were received. And during this public hearing, we will, uh, take any public comments. Our application for these funds opens at the end of June. Uh, applications are reviewed in August by the Project Review Committee, who will recommend projects and submit those recommendations through an annual action plan. And that action plan is anticipated to go for council in November for a public hearing. Funding priorities for both CDBG and Home remain in place from the previous year, laid out in our five-year consolidated plan. For CDBG, that includes projects in the city which can demonstrate a low-to-moderate income benefit, either through clientele who meet that threshold or an area-wide benefit, infrastructure and capital improvement projects, projects which improve and preserve affordable housing, and projects which expand economic opportunities for low-to-moderate income residents. And for our home funds, priorities include projects which can increase affordable housing stock. And again, we work with estimates, uh, each year until we actually submit the action plan to, to Housing and Urban Development. Next slide, please. All projects, uh, must meet one of these funding priorities. They must also be an eligible activity and meet a national objective as determined by Housing and Urban Development. And the, uh, changes to the policy plan this year include a pre-application requirement for all projects, regardless of if they have applied in previous years. All CDBG and Home applicants are now required to submit a pre-application form and attend a short pre-application meeting with staff before submitting a funding application. This gives the potential applicant an opportunity to ask questions about the funding and other regulatory requirements that come with, um, accepting federal funds. And it also gives staff the opportunity to review their eligibility prior to them actually submitting an application. Additionally, there is a new federal Additionally, there is a new federal regulatory requirement, which, uh, which we detail in the policy plan. This is the Build America by America Act, which was signed into law in two thousand twenty-one, and requires that projects containing iron and steel, which have combined federal funding in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, must use iron and steel, which was produced in the United States. And lastly, for, uh, council's reference and for our applicants, we have some important dates and deadlines coming up. City and county staff are meeting with applicants this month. The application will open on June twenty-ninth, and the link will be posted to both the city and county sites. Applications are due on July twenty-seventh at noon. And during the month of August, projects will be reviewed and scored by the Project Review Committee. Agency interviews and deliberations will take place the week of August twenty-ninth, and funding recommendations will be published for a thirty-day comment period in September before going to city council at a public hearing in November. Available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Linum. Uh, the purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comment, followed by action. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Hi, good evening once again. Jim Klein, the Charleston Business District. Uh, it's been an interesting journey in a year and a half, almost two years now, learning about how the city functions and how you develop a plan. Uh, I would encourage you to think about, um, for an example, I've worked on, on the redevelopment of Charleston and waited until, uh, after the deadline had come and gone for the block grants for next year. Now, whether the, that directly applies to anything that we want to see happen in Charleston or not, I'm not bringing, that's not a question. The one thing I would say is that there is situations where, and I've looked at how you notify the public, including public, uh, listing that in the newspaper. And I'd really like to see the council bring that up, uh, to the public, uh, starting January first, with the deadline being the end of May, so that the public really becomes much more aware of it. Because that's one of the things you've talked about is public environment. Uh, the, the block grant program is really, uh, uh, obviously a great program. And, uh, we continue to look forward to next year being involved in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Is there anybody online with their hand raised? Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this item? It's going twice. Okay. Seeing none, uh, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll go to the council for a motion. Counselor Fry?
I move to approve Resolution Number Three Three Five Eight, adopting the twenty twenty-four CDBG Home Policy Plan.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion and a second, and we are now open for discussion. Counselor Fry?
I want to thank Sarah, everybody else who worked on the plan. Uh, I know that it's, really makes an impact in the community. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Klein, uh, for your comments. We, we are really interested in public engagement and want to make sure that these opportunities, uh, are spread, uh, throughout the, the city. So thank you for your comment, uh, but very supportive of our program, Sarah. Thank you so much.
Counselor Mockler?
Thanks, Vice President Chamberlain. Um, one of the things that I really like about the CDBG, about this whole project, is the key citizen participation, which is found on page fifteen of their submittal. The, the efforts they went to, to talk to people, were just really keyed to people. They were not going around checking a box, saying, okay, we have public input. They really worked hard to make sure that they were hearing from people who were in need. And I just applaud the heck out of them. And I'm really looking forward to supporting this, the twenty twenty-four policy plan. Thank you, Sarah, and all.
This, President Coughlin have his hand raised?
I do. I just, I said this in study session, but I wanted to reiterate publicly. Um, I was the CDBG representative for council, uh, last year. Um, and I want to reiterate just what a fantastic process that Ms. Linum facilitated, um, in reviewing these applications, uh, fairly earnestly. Um, it was extremely well-run, so I look forward to seeing those results, uh, come back to council later this year. Thank you for all your work.
You. Uh, Ms. Linum, I'm looking forward to, uh, being part of the process this year. I'll be the next one on the, uh, committee. And so I feel like I'm in good hands, uh, with learning this, uh, and, um, delegating. It's, it's an exciting program, so thank you for your very capable work. And that is all. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, seeing none, I call for the question.
Councilmember is Denny He?
Denny He is absent, returning from the recess.
Thank you. Mockler?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries for yeses. Next on the agenda is Public Hearing Seven B. Public Hearing and Resolution Number Three Three Five Nine to adopt the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine six-year transportation improvement pro- program. Presenter is Engineering Project Manager Vicky Grover.
Good evening, council and members of the public. This evening, um, I would like to present, uh, the transport, six-year transportation improvement program. Um, and again, my name is Vicky Grover. So, uh, next slide, please. I'd like to begin with, what is the purpose of the six-year transportation improvement program? First of all, it is required by RCW. It is considered a high-level planning document that must be consistent with the city's twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. That means that the projects that we have on the transportation improvement program must be the same or consistent with the projects we have listed in our comprehensive plan. We file a revised or ask for your approval and resolution of a six-year transportation improvement program annually. And we do this to show the changes that have occurred on this improvement program since last year. Um, this also, uh, then is filed with the Washington State Department of Transportation with the purpose of allowing the city to apply for grant funds for the projects that are on the transportation improvement program. I would also like to briefly just touch on what the tran- transportation improvement program doesn't do, which it is not a financial document. And all of the projects that are listed are not prioritized in any manner, whether it's tier one, two, or three. Those are not listed in any particular order. And finally, the transportation improvement program document is not a means for adding new projects.
Next slide, please.
Finally, I want to briefly touch on what are the changes to this document from last year? Um, and again, it was pretty close, I believe, to about the same time last year. So the items that have changed, um, for instance, we removed the eleventh and Perry, uh, reconstruction project, because it will be done at the end of twenty twenty-three. And this again is the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine transportation improvement program. Uh, the Washington Roundabout that hasn't started yet is anticipated to also be completed by the end of this year. So it has also been removed from the transportation improvement program. The West Kitsap Way Reconstruction Planning Study is also to be completed this year and therefore has been removed from this document. The JCTP is another one. We also add projects, uh, to this document, uh, when they've been grant-funded. For example, we added the three oh three adaptive signals project. Um, it had previously been on the list. Um, if I remember correctly, it was under tier three because it was unfunded. We applied for grant funding. We got grant funding, therefore it moved to tier one. Again, just trying to help illustrate what the purpose of the document is and what the changes are, um, from last year. Uh, and I will talk just briefly about our bottom bullet there about the Warren Avenue Bridge. Usually they don't go this way, but this one went from tier one to tier two as the construction funding for the bridge has been pushed out by the legislature to the twenty twenty-nine and beyond. So unfortunately, it has moved it down to tier two as being partially funded. Um, and a side note is, we do have a plan to, uh, try to change that. Um, next slide, please. So I want to take questions, but I would also like to just briefly talk about the public hearing that's associated with the resolution um, to take public comment. I think there has been some confusion about what is the public comment that we anticipate to get. And I will say it is to ask the public to, uh, comment regarding, uh, uh, the consistency of the transportation improvement program with the goals and policies that are set in the comprehensive plan. Um, and it's also to show the progress that we've made, again, by the projects that we've removed, uh, showing the projects we've got br- uh, grant funding for that are now moved from tier three to tier one. Um, this really is, again, a planning document, um, and very tightly associated with the comprehensive plan. Um, we will take, uh, obviously, we'll take any public comment, um, that the public has regarding this document. But I wanted to just kind of give an idea of what it is we expect to hear from the public regarding a transportation improvement program, six-year plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grover. I have one quick, um, point of housekeeping. Uh, I just wanted to ask if any other council members have signed on through Zoom? We have Coughlin online. Do we have Good Now online? Good Now is online, thank you.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you for joining us, Councilor Good Now. Uh, so, uh, the purpose of this public hearing is to accept public comment. It will be followed by action, and I'll be using the gavel again. Public hearing is open. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Jane Revolowski, Remerton resident. So I sat in and watched the, um, Public Works Committee meeting where they painfully described that this is just a planning document. But the problem is, is not everybody likes the plan. And I, I understand that it's priorities set by others. And I'm concerned because there doesn't seem to be consistency in who gets to look at the grants before they're applied for. And then, once they are granted, then Public Works Committee looks at them. And it really should be looked at by both. And there's a lot of projects that are in tier three that were in the comprehensive plan and the non-motorized plan in two thousand seven and are still in tier three. So part of it is, myself and a lot of other people are concerned with who decides what grants are gonna be applied for. And maybe we just don't apply for grants for a while and do small community projects with all the match money, which in this document, it gives figures for tier one, but it doesn't tell you what the city's match is. So if we, like, for instance, adaptive signals, um, we're paying close to two million dollars in four years. And yet that is something that I believe only was solidified at the three oh three corridor study, which was, um, completed during COVID. So it moved up pretty fast, but things that help the people who actually live here, like safe bike lanes, safe sidewalks, those sorts of things don't seem to move up. And if they do, like, a lot of the things in, in tier three, I don't even know what they are. And I worked in public works for over thirty-five years. I mean, green standard pedestrian improvements, what's that? Area B collector streets.
Thirty seconds.
Just really vague. So anyway, those are my comments. It might not be the comments anybody's gonna listen to, but there they are.
Thank you. Is there anybody online who'd like to comment on this item? Oh, we have Travis Merrigan. Thank you for hanging on and joining us. Mr. Merrigan, can you hear us? You're next.
Pardon, I was muted. Um, thank you again. Um, I would like to take a look at the original law that was mentioned in the, in the initial presentation. Um, I'm reading directly from the RCW on the state website. Uh, and it starts, "The legislative body of each city and town." That's the city council. That's the seven of you sitting up there. This is your document. You get to choose what goes in this document. Clearly, there are rules about what must go in the document, but I don't see anywhere where it says it can't go. Furthermore, I'm, I'm reading down blah, blah, blah. "The purpose of this section, the purpose, is to assure that each city and town shall perpetually have available advanced plans, looking to the future for not less than six years, as a guide, a guide for carrying out a coordinated transportation plan." So what I see in there is the invitation for the people elected who are closest to the, to the citizens to lay out a guide, a vision for what the city wants to do moving into the future. In this case, on the non-motorized transportation. This is not the non-motorized transportation plan. That is another opportunity for the city to lay out a vision. But this is directly from the state, the city council's opportunity to lay out their vision. I think that what was presented in, uh, the, the tier one, two, three, it's excellent. It will be an excellent appendage, appendix, rather, for the, the vision that the city council lays out. Um, also, it is things that have already received funding. Funding takes a long time. So in a manner of thinking, that is the, that was the vision from six years ago, looking forward. And, and now we're carrying those out, and that's wonderful. And Public Works is, Public Works is gonna do a great job carrying out those projects. What are we gonna do for the next six years, the next twelve years? What are the thirty, twenty, thirty's gonna look like? That's the vision that the law is inviting the city council to, to lay out for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Merrigan. Is there any other member of the public that would like, would like to comment on this item? Going ones going twice. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Thank you.
Counselor, I'm Counselor Mockler.
No worries. Move to approve Resolution Number Three Three Five Nine, which approves the city's twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine six-year transportation improvement program. It allows the mayor to forward the resolution and plan to the Puget Sound Regional Council and Washington State Department of Transportation.
Is there a second? Is Coughlin by any chance raising, or anybody else raising their hand? Is there a second?
There's Michael.
Oh, sorry, Michael.
Thank you, Councilor Good Now. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we are open for discussion. Counselor Mockler?
Thank you. Um, I guess the first and most important thing I'd like to state is that we're not in an adversarial relationship here. We, the council, represent the people who live here, and we're trying to do that the best we can. And since it has been my privilege to be the chair of the Public Works Committee and the vice chair last year, I have seen firsthand how hard public works, works. So we are disagreeing, but we're not, you know, we're going to disagree from time to time. It's gonna happen. Um, that said, uh, I'd like to just make one small caveat, which is that no one on council no one on council has proposed a new project while members of the public have proposed making Sixth Street, and this has been proposed at least back to 2018, making Sixth Street three lanes with a two-way turn lane in the middle. No one on council has proposed that at this time. Okay, just making, making it clear that we have not done that. So moving on to questions, the 2007 non-motorized plan that is part of or consistent with the comprehensive plan, yeah?
Yes, that is the idea. Obviously, by the dates, 2007 non-motorized plan and a 2016 transportation element, there is a very large gap there. As we discussed last evening, that is my next step, is to update both of those documents and make them consistent. Make them help see what is the new vision. Again, that's why you update those planning documents every six, it's now eight years, is because the vision does change, projects change. And so I'm hoping that we'll get lots of input again for updating those documents in the next 18 months.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Grover. I'm going to echo Mr. Lever at yesterday's meeting and saying, it's so unusual to find someone excited about comp plans. But in the meantime, let's put down our bucket where we are with the comp plan we have. So the answer to my question would be yes?
Yes.
Okay, cool. A few, I think, two or three weeks ago, when the analytic signals, when Nikatai presented the analytic signals on that first segment of Wheaton Way, and I suggested that we turn down this money and use the match, the city match funds of, I think, 421,000 for maintenance, for small community projects, for sidewalks, for making our parks and schools safe for kids to walk to and from. And Mr. Weber pointed out that council had already approved us, Public Works applying for the grant. If we approve this six-year tip, does that constitute approval of Public Works applying for the grants in tier one?
No, as we've already applied for those.
Okay, so it doesn't constitute approval for any grants. Okay.
No.
That was a different mechanism. Okay. Those were my, you know, those were my intelligent questions. I'm going to go on to say some other things, which is though we talked about this for quite a while yesterday evening, I don't know what city safety improvement constitutes. I don't know what city street lighting constitutes. The systemic pedestrian treatments bundle, the, those are the big orange boards with the rectangular flashing beacons. I have only ever seen them alerting people to construction things, you know, to construction that's coming up. So how they are part of a systemic pedestrian treatments, I don't understand. Almost done. Yeah, so these are things that I don't understand, and I don't believe that anyone else on council understands what they mean either. And therefore, it's very difficult for us to perform, you know, like the 7,000-plus people that I represent, they wouldn't fit into this room, and they would be too busy, and they probably wouldn't be interested in sitting through this whole meeting. So I'm doing my best to represent them here. I don't think any of them would know this either. And therefore, it's difficult for us to perform the oversight that we need to perform. I understand that you have, should I stop talking and give you a chance to jump in?
I think I have an answer for you, and again, for Ms. Revolowski's comments.
Thank you, Ms. Grover.
Let me just say to you guys, because I do understand, you know, under unfunded green standard pedestrian improvements, yes, what does that mean? Well, again, the consistency with our current 2016 transportation element comprehensive plan will answer these questions for you because that is where these projects are spelled out. So if we could reference the 2016 TE transportation element, the 2007 non-motorized plan will have project descriptions for all of these projects that are shown on the transportation improvement program. You will see, for example, however, that there are, we would put like the whole subarea plan. And I will tell you that that is an easy way when when we get a new subarea plan and that we'll just put the whole plan on this document. Because usually within that subarea plan, there are a lot of other transportation projects. So rather than listing them out, we will put the comprehensive plan, subarea plan on this list. And again, you know, those are some comments that if council desires for us to be more specific, it'll make the list longer, but we can do things like that. And so there are some general topics for projects on this list, I will agree. But again, you should be able to understand them from our other planning documents.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, but this seems to be a recurring thing. It's, it's only this evening after 5:15 PM that we were told that the purpose of public comment was to determine consistency with the comprehensive plan. This gives us basically zero time in order to determine, in order to look at this like that. Had this been included in a previous iteration of this, perhaps the first time that the six-year tip was presented at Public Works Committee, we would have been able to be prepared to evaluate it. But as it is, we cannot, and I'm going to recommend that we postpone this, not indefinitely, but
Counselor Mokler, are you making an amendment to the motion?
I guess I am, actually. Thank you very much for being parliamentary.
What is your amendment?
Councilmember Mokler already made the main motion.
Oh, okay, so then it's not amendable if she makes the main motion?
Correct.
Thank you.
Then I will simply express a sentiment that it would be very, very pleasant to sit down and go over this in a study session. There. Thank you.
And I apologize that maybe I didn't make this clear before. I will be honest, I've been struggling a little bit about how to get you, you guys to understand this, and because I deal with these things a lot, it kind of becomes second nature to me, so my apologies for not being more clear initially, and I tried to be clear tonight, so maybe I did a little better. Thank you.
Congratulations on your presentation, Ms. Grover.
Counselor Good Now, do you have any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, this I guess I'm the senior person on council at the moment, but again, this is, this is one of the tools that Public Works uses to get their work done and to get funding and things like that. And whether they apply for a grant or not comes through us, whether they contracted, it comes through us. This is just a, this is a snapshot of what's going on. I do want to mention that the Sixth Street Road Diet is on here, and we have talked about that. We've been talking about that for years. I don't even know when, somebody could probably answer when that actually made it onto this list, but we were talking about it even before then. And as I'm sure it was stated, that we can't go after any funding unless it's on this list. And to put things on this list that we would use our general fund money on without any grants doesn't make any sense because we don't have to put general fund projects on this. We just spend that money to do it. This is specifically to get those funds from other, other entities that fund road projects and things like that. So anyways, I, I'm to me, this is just a little procedural. The other thing I want to say is, I think we have an amazing Public Works department, and I've served on Public Works, and I've obviously worked with them now for almost the six years. And, you know, our oversight is, it's very, it's very large. It's, you know, higher up, bigger picture, and it is, and we do that oversight by approving those projects or not, and looking at this, and we've, I, I'm pretty sure that in the time that we've, that I've been around, we have had, in discussion, have had things added to this list. But, and I don't, I don't think, you know, I don't think it says, it's as an important document in the way some folks are referencing it, as it is a tool for Public Works to go after the funding when, when they're directed to. And also, what this does is it stops us from chasing funding. So we might hear that there's a grant out there for, you know, purple street lamps. And then we, you know, we're not going to just go say that we need purple street lamps, right? It would have to be in our plan that that's what we're looking to do. So anyways, great job. I think that, that this is, again, I think they did a great job on it, and I think it looks good, and it's, I think it's ready to go.
Thank you, Counselor Good Now. President Coughlin or Counselor Coughlin? I know you told me to call you counselor, but
Luke Counselor tonight.
President Coughlin.
Well, thank you, Vice President Chamberlain. Thank you, Ms. Grover, for the presentation. If I, if I heard you correctly, Ms. Grover, you said that the tip is not a means to add new projects, but how do, how do new projects get on this list?
Thank you very much. That is a great question. Again, something I've been, thought I've been fairly vocal about the six-year comp, or I'm sorry, the update to our comprehensive plan from 2016, we I'm actually a little behind the eight ball. We have until December of 2024 to get it approved. So the transportation element and the update to the 07 non-motorized plan is something I'm working on. And during that time of both of those documents, as required by RCW, we will be doing extensive public outreach. And it is during that time of seeing what our vision is changing to, what are priorities to the citizens of Bremerton, that we can add and change the project list that is in the comprehensive plan and our non-motorized plan, that then this six-year tip will be representative of. We do things like, we're going to look at the list that we have from the 2007. What, what of those projects have we gotten done? We'll take those off. So we start by consolidating the existing project list we have, and then we start engaging the public. And so that is the opportunity and time for people to, you know, talk about adding new projects, maybe making some of the projects we have on here more definitive. We do, again, on occasion, have a tendency to write a more general project, leaves it more open for funding. But on the comprehensive plan is when we're going to get very specific about project updates and just update the overall vision for Bremerton.
Okay, thank you. So if I understand right, this tip list was created sometime after the 2016 comprehensive plan update, and almost nothing's been added to it since?
That's correct. It should be in a, pretty much an exact replica of what we have in those project lists. And that, that's how this changes. It has to be consistent with any changes that we may do to the comprehensive plan that has a capital improvement program in it as well. That's what this comes from. And so as we make those changes during the update, and we take off projects that are already done, which we do on the six-year tip annually to keep the funding organizations up to date with where we're at, what we're working on. But the comprehensive plan project list is something that we'll look at and revise and take comment from the public on over the next 18 months.
Gotcha. We got a public comment, a couple of public comments I wanted to address that came in writing. One was on the naming, for example, in what's now in tier two, TR 29 says SR 303 Warren Avenue Bridge Pedestrian Improvements. And the public comment was pointing out that all the language that's been used by the city is multimodal. And obviously saying not just pedestrian, but of course, non-motorized users. And I'm looking at the transportation appendix to the 2016 comprehensive plan, and it does say item 28, Warren Avenue Bridge Reconfiguration for Multi-Use. I'm guessing multi-short for multimodal. So this, am I wrong? This seems to be a mismatch in the language between what's in the comprehensive plan and what's on the tip?
Yes, you are correct. Those are all referring to the same projects. I'll take the blame for the multimodal naming of the current Warren Avenue Bridge. That was my call, but yes, these are the type of inconsistencies that we should be addressing during this time.
Okay, that's perfect. So we could, we could update that language. And then, looking also at that transportation appendix to the 2016 comprehensive plan, I noticed that item 27, right next to, right above the Warren Bridge configuration, it says pedestrian connector under Warren Avenue Bridge South Approach, which I believe was a study to look at a tunnel connecting the south part, and I noticed that's not listed in the tip before us anywhere. So that's an inconsistency that I see of something that's in the comprehensive plan, but not on this current tip. Is that something that would be added since it's already in the, in the comp plan or could be added?
It is something I would need to, let me just preface that with to verify that it is not included. And again, this is when we get to the, the naming, nomenclature, the brevity of some of these projects to make sure we don't have it. But yes, if it is not, it is something that should be on this list.
Okay, yeah, looking through all the, this is obviously would be unfunded, looking through all the tier three unfunded, I don't see anything on there that lines up with the south of Warren Bridge pedestrian connector or tunnel that I see in there, but folks can check me on that one. And then, just more public comments I have time to address, but just picking at another one, so sorry, one second. I have to scroll to make sure I get the right comment. So yeah, this, this was another example on TR 135, 12 miles of trails. Do you remember what part of the comp plan that's, that's talking about?
I'm sorry to say that I do not.
Okay. Sorry. I'll pause in case someone else is coming in the room there. Oh, yes, I see Mr. Weber.
There. Yes, I think I could answer that question. So the 12 miles of trails referred to projects that were listed in the subarea plan for PSEC, Puget Sound Industrial Center, and it didn't specify where those 12 miles of trails were going in PSEC. There's just a big area there saying that we should put in 12 miles of trails in the subarea plan. So that's what was put in the comprehensive plan, and unfortunately, there's no specificity about where those trails are in the subarea plan.
Okay, thank you. To wrap up, I'm absolutely, we have a great relationship. This is a lot of work. I am concerned, though principally, you know, not, not so much on the naming. I know that's a minor detail. But it is said that for a project to be eligible for funding, it needs to be on this list, and so just quickly finding one pretty important project from the comp plan that's not on here that I can see. I don't really feel comfortable voting for it right now. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to postpone this item until the July 5th general meeting and use the June 28th study session to maybe iron out a few of these issues.
I'll second. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I can respond to the comment about the pedestrian crossing because I was involved a little bit in that, I think it was last year or the year before. And we presented it to council. Basically, what happened was we had a project in the comprehensive plan that was studying the SR 303 quarter the entire quarter, and it was to do a planning exercise for that quarter. And once we got done with that plan, there is a whole series of projects that were included in the corridor plan itself, and one of those projects had the tunnel in it as one part of the phasing in that report. And so there was several projects and phasings that were duplicates of what we put in the comprehensive plan that came out of the corridor plan. And so what we ended up doing was saying, okay, well, if they're duplicated within the corridor plan, then we're not going to specifically list it as another project since it's already in the corridor plan. And so if you look at, at tier three, I believe, there should be a line And so if you look at um, at tier three, I believe, uh, there should be a line item in there for the uh, implementation of the SR three oh three uh, quarter study. And within the quarter study itself has all those projects for the entire quarter that were identified as part of that plan. So that was done intentionally, uh, and it was done to simplify this list. Um, and that project being part of uh, the implementation of that plan is still included in this list, but it's not split out separately as its separate project. Um, that was a change that we made, um, I think either last year or the year before, um, when the uh, plan was uh, was completed, um, that we presented to council. Um, so that's why you see that in there, and that's why that specific project is not listed uh, as it was in the comprehensive plan. And then I guess the other thing I wanted to mention is, um, you know, um, President Coughlin, I know you asked about uh, about projects, if they're going to be, uh, you know, whether or not we add them to the list, um, or have there been any projects added?
Mr. Weber, we actually have a new motion on the floor. So I'm going to take, it's okay, I'm going to take a moment and just check in with President Coughlin to see if you'd like Mr. Weber to continue or if you'd like to ask a new question based on the new motion that, that we've presented and has been seconded.
No, I, I, I really appreciate the clarification, especially about the, the tunnel and the three oh three improvements. Um, I'm still not real comf- I want to keep my motion on the table because I'm still not re-com- comfortable hashing out some of this last minute. Um, I, I, I think we need another study session to iterate on this, um, because I think last study session I had asked about, responded to public comment. It was, oh yeah, I think we can do that. Now, now I'm kind of hearing nothing can be changed, so I, I would just like to take a little more time on this still.
Thank you, President Coughlin. So, a- and I seconded the motion. I'm going to go ahead and just speak on it, although I recognize that Counselor Dennehy hasn't spoken on this item. Okay. Um, uh, Attorney Fennel, I just wanted to, I'm going to ask you a question that I know is going to take you a minute to probably look it up. Um, I just want to make sure that we're in compliance with a specific RCW, um, which is RCW three five dot seven seven dot zero one zero. I can repeat that for you. It's all right. Oh, you got it. Okay. So, and that was mentioned by one of our persons that made public comment.
In the resolution.
Okay, are we in compliance? If we are not actually the ones who are creating the plan, we're just do you see what I'm saying? Like it's supposed to be the legislative body, but we're, we're taking a recommendation of administration that's telling us that we don't actually get to have a say in it. That's my, my baseline interpretation of kind of the system right now. I'm just coming at it from a layman's perspective.
So I think that, I guess, the, the statute states that it's the, the legislative body that prepares after a public hearing. They're on adopt or revise an extended comprehensive transportation program before July first of each year. So, um, I don't think that that means that necessarily the legislative body um, does.
The heavy lifting.
The heavy lifting. I think that means that the legislative body um, works with the administration and the engineers and comes up with the list that they approve um, after a public hearing is how I would take that. I don't think that there's really any um, jurisdiction, at least that I'm aware of, that like the council um, comes up with their, the tip on their own without the engineers, so.
We need you. Let me tell you, so I'm getting right, so I've been, bear with me, I'm going to give you a little, little story here. So I'm teaching my son my recipes, which is the only person that I really trust right now with my recipes. I run, you know, and trying to describe to him how to do each different kind of the cookies. Each one has their own baking recipe directions, right? Uh, and so where we're at is we don't know how to bake the cookies, okay? Uh, and we're just asking for you to teach us how to bake each cookie. Okay, so we need some more time is kind of what I'm hearing from several members here. It's not that we don't trust you. We obviously, you obviously know your stuff, okay? You, you all are very intelligent, professional. Uh, you have great ideas, you go out there and get amazing grants and do amazing stuff for our city. I think we just, several of us are, well, I can only speak for myself. We just, we just want to understand it a little more. And based on all the public comment that we're getting, I feel like we want to take a pause for just a, just a minute so that we can digest. Um, that's where I'm coming from. And Counselor Dennehy, do you have anything you'd like to add to this conversation?
No, except for clarification, there were two motions on the floor. Remind me of the last one, please.
So uh, President Coughlin made a motion to postpone the approval of the tip until the next study session. Am I correct?
That was correct.
Got you. Thanks. Then no questions.
Okay, so with that, um, do we have another hand up? Oh, uh, oh, sorry, Counselor uh, Goodnow by chance? Okay, Counselor Goodnow, I guessed right.
So I guess the question I have is uh, will, can we, can we delay it? If it's, um, so we're, we're, we're looking at doing it during next week's study session? Is that the?
Correct.
All right, um, just wanted to make sure, I, um, that's good, that'll get it done in time and submitted in time, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Yeah, so we need to submit it by July first, uh, according to RCW. So if it's um, something that's approved next week, then that should meet the, the deadline.
Thank you for that clarification. Vice President Chamberlain, but it's, the action date wouldn't be until July fifth.
Okay, or could we? Could we have a study session where we take action at the study session?
Just like last week, we had an action item um, on the agenda. The council can take action on those, at, at a study session to be in compliance with the statute.
And you see, what I love about this is that it's all public. We're telling you at a council meeting, we're, we're planning to take action at a next study session if we approve this motion, of course. And um, that'll give more opportunity for public comment, which is, I think, really valuable in a lot of ways.
Vice President?
Yes, um, we would also need an amending motion on the amendment. Because he said, because President Coughlin said July fifth.
My, I thought I heard June twenty-eighth. President Coughlin, would you like to make an amending motion to get this done in a timely manner?
Yes, if I can, I will, um, I, I believe the motion I made did propose action on, on July fifth. So I will pull that motion and make a new motion to postpone this until the June twenty-eighth study session with action to be taken at that study session.
And so we're waiting on a second for that amended motion.
Second.
Okay, Ken, is that okay, parliamentarian for?
Yes.
Counselor Maukler, thank you. Okay, so we have a second, so now we're open again for discussion. Um, technically, but did you have a question, Counselor Maukler?
Yeah, um, I have a question for Attorney Fennel, which is um, the RCW, I don't see anything about July first, but you know, am I a lawyer? No. Um, but it does point out that the legislative body has to prepare and after public hearings adopt. Have today's public hearings constituted? Do they satisfy the RCW?
If you're looking, if you're looking at this um, statute, counsel or Maukler, it's kind of in the middle of the paragraph, uh, the second paragraph after sub one, you'll see July first. It's, I think, four lines into the second paragraph. Actually just beyond where you were reading.
Is there any other discussion on this amended, amended motion? From Counselor. Okay, so I call for the question on the amended motion.
The amended motion is to postpone this item until June twenty-eighth with action.
Yes, let's, let's call it.
Councilmember Maukler.
Yes.
Thank you. Coughlin?
Yes.
Dennehy?
No.
Good now.
No.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, three yeses, two nos.
Do we need to go back to the original motion to do anything with that?
Yes, we have to approve the final motion, which is yes, the motion as amended, the main motion as amended is what we're voting on now.
Do you have recommended wording for, do you have the words for us, parliamentarian? Bear with me, this is my very first time chairing a council meeting, can you tell? Maybe this is my second, so I don't have any excuses.
So we are going to, bear with me just a second.
No problem. Thank you for your hard work.
So our main motion was move to approve resolution number three, three, five, nine, which approves the city's twenty, twenty-four through twenty, twenty-nine six-year transportation improvement program. And allow the mayor to forward the resolution and plan to the Puget Sound Regional Council and Washington Department of Transportation.
Got it.
Our amending motion would be to postpone this item, resolution number three, three, five, nine to June twenty-eighth with action.
So.
That is the final motion.
And so I call for the question once more. And the question is for clarification, to approve the amended motion and deny the original motion.
Correct.
To, to approve the amendment to the original motion. Okay, I call for the question.
Councilmember Goodnow.
Yes.
Maukler?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. It has been postponed to June twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you very much, folks. Next up, we have a public hearing on ordinance number five, four, seven, nine. Ms. Hoover?
So that is ordinance number five, four, five, who, five, four, seven, nine to amend BMC section nine point four eight entitled fireworks. Presenter is Fire Chief Pat McGann.
I'm presenting, hello, Chief McGann. Do you have any guests with you today?
I do have a guest, Fire Marshal.
Bring him on up.
Come on, Mike.
Yeah, come on up, Marshal Six, Captain Six, which, tell me your proper title. My, I can't, I, I'm going to call you Captain Six. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening. So tonight before you is uh, amendment to uh, chapter nine point four eight of.
I need to pause for a moment. Do we still have two council members online? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can I go back on something really quick?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, because.
I apologize. Chief McGann, Captain Six, bear with us just one moment. Yes, ma'am.
We do have quorum right now. Okay.
We have quorum right now. Great, okay. It's a balancing act today, y'all.
Yeah, so there was a question uh, asked of me about whether the public hearing today would su- be sufficient for the statute. I'm going to say that in abundance of caution, we should also take public testimony. One, to comply with the OPMA next week, and also to make sure that we satisfy this portion of the statute. There's a provision on rereading it that states that the legislative body shall prepare and after public hearings thereon, adopt a revised and um, extended comprehensive transportation program. And so, um, in abundance of caution, I think we should also take public testimony after um, at, at the next hearing.
Is that procedural or do we need an amendment for that public hearing?
No, that's.
Procedural?
Know that that's going to be on the agenda and I didn't want there to be a.
I love that. Thank you. It's fantastic. Thank you so much, Attorney Fennel. All right, Chief McGann, Captain Six, thank you for hanging out and presenting today.
All right, so the ordinance before you tonight is uh, request revision to chapter nine point four eight of the BMC required fireworks. And the two main issues that we're requesting changes to are nine point four eight point zero, three, zero, which is named retail fireworks stands. And it's a list of what we're calling common fireworks. And uh, also the hours and sales of fireworks. And there was a change, and I'll get to that in just a sec. The, the hours that we're requesting uh, be changed from uh, July twenty-eighth to July third from eleven AM. Excuse me, that's when they can be fired. It's a little out, out of uh, ordinance. So we're requesting that fireworks can be fired for, fired off from July third at eleven AM and July fourth, eleven AM to midnight. Um, that is a change because currently fireworks are only allowed to be discharged on July fourth. The sales of fireworks, um, we're requesting that sale for fireworks can be opened up on July first and second, third, and fourth from nine AM to eleven PM. And the change of that is normally it starts on June twenty-eighth and goes through July fourth. And there are some insurance requirements um, also added to this change. And I'm going to let Mike talk about how we got to this point. So as we talked about in study session, uh, took some training with uh, TNT fireworks. We went through some details and I believe uh, Mr. Sirley from uh, TNT fireworks, he said he was going to call in. I'm not sure whether he's online. Randy Sirley. So, uh, Mr. Sirley, we uh, talked on the phone. Um, the original proposal was to have sales on the third and the fourth of July, which mirrored the discharge time. Um, after some conversation with Mr. Sirley, we agreed uh, to allow or to propose the sale on July first, second, third, and fourth, um, extending that out a couple of days. It seemed like a reasonable uh, compromise. So that's how we uh, arrived here today.
Thank you. So just, um, uh, let me just go ahead and do this. Let me just clarify one quick point. Uh, in the, in the ordinance, proposed ordinance we have here in our packet, the date still says July third to July fifth. But in your request, you're asking, I know this is a public hearing, I just want to make sure I get this clear. But what you're requesting is feedback from the vent, based on feedback from vendors and so on, that we extend it July first to midnight, technically July fifth or eleven, eleven o'clock July, July fourth.
Right, we have two, two different timelines, one for sale, one for discharge. So the sales um, allow sales from first uh, through the fourth and discharge is basically the third and the fourth.
Okay, thank you. That is in there. Okay, uh, the purpose of this public hearing is to accept public comment, uh, followed by action. I'm using the gavel again. Public hearing is open. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Is there anybody online with their hand raised? Okay, going once, going twice on public comment, public recognition. Oh, there's a hand raised? Okay, so we have Randy Sirley, am I saying that right?
Uh, it's a curly.
Curly.
Yeah, no problem. I've been called every name in the book, so it's all good. Um, so good evening, uh, City Council, uh, thank you so much for this opportunity. Um, as uh, Fire Marshal Six had, had mentioned, um, him and I and uh, Chief McGann had a conversation last week um, in regards to this uh, meeting. Although, you know, I'm, I never want anything to be changed. I think it is in the best interest of the community and the, and safety of the people. Um, I'm to endorse this uh, this change uh, going for uh, detonation of fireworks on the third and the fourth with sales to be on the first, second, third, and fourth. Uh, the main reason why uh, I think we came to this uh, agreement was in Kitsap County, uh, it is legal for what we call in the, in the um, community, uh, full sea market with mortars, aerials, stuff like that. And if with having sales in Bremerton city limits be the first, second, third, and fourth, that gives the public the opportunity to buy the legal fireworks that are inside the city limits and not uh, go outside of the city limits into the county early to get their fireworks early, which would be illegal to come back in the city. So it would, it, it just creates that uh, more um, safe environment, ground-based fountains, fireworks. Uh, and people can go into the county and stay in the county and do what's legal in the county. Um, but if they're coming into the city of Bremerton to have the opportunity to buy those fireworks that are legal, are legal. And be a, you know, have, have a, what we call a safe and sane um, Fourth of July. Um, and so I am from the industry, from TNT fireworks, we are in um, in agreement with both Fire uh, Marshal Six and Fire Chief McGann.
Mr. Curly, is there any other member of the public that would wish to comment on this item?
I'm just very curious about.
I'm just very curious about the enforcement process and potential ticketing or fining citizens and how this would be done. Is it just up to neighbor tattling on another neighbor? I don't understand how this can really be enforced, but I don't like the noise myself, but I've endured for many, many, many years the Fourth of July celebrations. And I know that fire hazard is a problem, but I just, I'm curious as to how this can be an enforceable ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment? We have the raised hand. Okay, we have Brian Anderson.
Yes, hi, hello. Sorry, I think I missed the part where the fire marshals were actually presenting. I have bad service, but I just wanted to say that I think any incremental improvement we can make surrounding the regulation of fireworks in a dense urban environment is a good thing. I really appreciate how this, from what I saw, addresses the point of sale versus being punitive on folks who are maybe in a park shooting them off, because I think the point of sale is really where we make the most impact. So I would strongly urge the city council to support this. I think it would be a good step in the right direction. I think there's more work that needs to be done on the county level. But I think this is a really good effort and idea. So just wanted to add that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anybody else that has their hand raised online? No? Okay. Any other member of the public?
Just looking for clarification on with the ordinance again. I, I heard that they're gonna have, you're able to fire off the fireworks for two days, and sales are from the first of July to the fourth of July. But I also heard something about safe and sane and mortars. Are, are, are they putting restrictions on what you can fire off as well? I didn't hear that in what they said. So now I'm, I'm asking for clarification. So that is case, they want to do that. That, I think, is gonna be really hard to enforce with the county horse right next door, and also with the Indian reservation also will be selling on mortars. So I, I, I would say I am not in favor of the restriction of what can be fired off. I think what we have had for many, many years has worked okay. And I think if we're gonna restrict it, that it's gonna be really hard to enforce, and also people are just gonna do what they're gonna do, because it's thirty minutes away, right? So there we are. So the other part I'm good with. I've sold fireworks for forty years, and so I'm familiar with that, that business. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. So this is public hearing. Is there anything else that y'all would like to, that fire would like to add? Is that appropriate to do, Ms. Hoover? Okay, okay.
I just thought to go over Dave's questions and maybe just do a quick overview of kind of what we're really.
Thank you.
Really where we're, where we're going. So the proposal, so we, we changed the ordinance, an existing ordinance, it's got the template for somewhat of what we were proposing. Before this proposal, fireworks could be sold from, I think it was noon on the twenty-eighth through midnight of the Fourth of July, is that right? And then anything really that fell into kind of the, the generic safe and sane type fireworks. So then only discharged on the Fourth of, Fourth of July from eleven AM through, through midnight. What we're proposing is reeling in the definition of common fireworks. And let me, let me run through those, that definition real quick. A ground device that emits showers of sparks several feet in the air, a type of fountain in the shape of a cone. Common fireworks must be handheld, ground-based sparkling devices, which are non-aerial, non-explosive. And I think that's probably one of the main items that, that people are interested in, in hearing about. And then novelty fireworks such as snaps, snakes, poppers, all of which actually have definitions within the RCW. So this is somewhat of a supplemental document as we adopt it locally or propose to adopt it locally. They can shoot white smoke or even multicolor parachutes. There's a definition for smoke. And then there's a definition for sparklers and morning glories, a handheld stick with a coating of pyrotechnic composition and, and so on. We don't make any changes to the rest of it, talking about signage and so on. We reel in or we're asking to reel in the dates of sale, which normally is the twenty-eighth through the fourth. We're asking to reel that in to just the, the sale, first, second, third, and fourth, and then discharge, we're opening, asking to open it up to discharge on the third and the fourth. And, and that, that change actually was, in the original version of this, was to ask for the sales of fireworks being on the third and the fourth and mirror that up with discharge. So you can buy it on the same day, you can discharge it. Working with TNT, we agreed to make the request. Randy's, you know, comment makes perfect, perfectly logical, open it up for sales, and we just left in the third. If we're, if the type of fireworks that are being discharged are less aggressive, theoretically, it should annoy people less, I guess, is kind of the, the concept in that. So that's kind of the overview that, as far as enforcement. It's tough. No, no doubt about it. It's, it's a tough question. We, we really have had good luck in the past with just education. People are very receptive to that. Some people aren't, most people are. And so baby steps, we're gonna see how this works out. If we can or need to do something in the future, maybe we, we come back to this, to this platform, but I'm hoping just to talk with people.
Thank you for that clarification, Captain Six. Was there Attorney Fennel?
Thank you. I did want to point one thing out, and this was discussed in study session, is that per state law, and it's RCW seven, zero point seven, seven point two, five, zero, sub four, any change that we make to our code doesn't take effect for a year. So this isn't stuff that's going to be implemented this year. And we will be correcting that on the ordinance. We have a stock form for ordinances, and I think this is the only one that doesn't generally come into effect within ten years or within ten days. So we'll be correcting that, and I think it was discussed in study session, but it will not be in effect for this year.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any member of the public or online that wishes to comment on this item? Going once, going twice on public recognition. None. I'm closing the public hearing, and I'll go to council for a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number five, four, seven, nine, amending section nine point four eight of the Bremerton municipal code.
Is there a second? Is anybody? Who was that?
Coughlin, I'll second.
Thank you, President Coughlin. All right, we have a motion and a second, and we are open for discussion. Counselor Mockler?
I think this is a great ordinance. I originally objected to extending the period from the third and fourth, which had been proposed to us, but I think the objection made, which is by extending it, we prevent people from going, oh, heck, I'm going out to the county to, to get what I want. I think this is a great first step. I really am so pleased that the fire department brought it to us. And I have one change and one change only that I would like to make, which is since people have a really hard time understanding zero point zero, zero AM, to change it to July fourth, eleven fifty-nine PM, which is something people will be able to understand. Congratulations, and I hope this leads forward. I, I, I should mention to those few members of the public who are still here that every year on the fourth, you know, really pretty much from like the bridge blast until mid-July, council gets dozens and dozens of emails of people who can't sleep, whose grass has been set on fire, whose dogs have, are quite upset. Pets get lost. It just goes on and on. So we are responding to this. Do we think it's gonna solve it entirely? No. I'm gonna quote President Obama, government can't make things perfect, just make them a little better.
Thank you, Counselor Mockler. And was that President Coughlin that seconded?
Yes, it was.
Yes, for you.
Well, thank you, Vice President. Yeah, I, I'll say, when I talk to people about fireworks and my constituents, you know, the vast majority, I think, have no problem with the, the current time of discharge on July fourth and, and having some period like that. What I have on people to be quite justifiably upset about is it's June twenty-fifth, you know, and there's fireworks going off at two AM right near their house. And so and so I think that's what people are really upset about. And I think this is a, a step we can take to help mitigate those circumstances. I absolutely recognize the difficulty of enforcement. If nine oh one gets a call, there's a lot of firework, I don't see them, I don't know where it came from. There's not much fire or police can do in that situation. My last study session, I, I, you know, I asked, hey, if somebody is, if it is, you know, June twenty-fifth, and they're shooting it off in a park or somewhere in a house, and there are no other priority calls going on, it sounds like police and fire can respond and will. So I do encourage folks out there to, to call in if you're, you know, seeing a reportable incident. But anyway, this, this seems like good steps. It's, it is difficult. We're just one city with some really jagged borders, so folks can go to the county, but maybe other folks will follow our lead, and this is a sensible step to mitigate the impact of fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you, President Coughlin. Any other counselors want to comment on this issue? Counselor Dennehy?
I'll, I'll just throw in my two cents to kind of preface what my, my vote will be about, but I think Ms. Long, and I'm, I'm sorry, I forget. Mr. Cooper, Mr. Cooper hit my reasoning, kind of nail on the head, is I, I think it's just really hard to enforce, so I'm not gonna be voting for this, but I really do appreciate the work that the fire department has done. And, and yeah, if we get, get to a point where we could enforce, that'd be great, but I don't think that's possible, so thanks a lot.
Thank you, Counselor Dennehy. Counselor, good now? Do you have any comments to make?
I know.
Counselor Coughlin, your, hand us back up, but can I pause on your next comment? I just want to, so Counselor Frye had to leave at seven thirty, just for record-keeping purposes, Ms. Hoover. And so she wanted me to convey her sincere thank you for the work that y'all did, not only in, you know, finding a wording that would work for us, but also in working with another stakeholder to, to get buy-in for this as well. And that stakeholder being TNT. I, and so this would not go into effect until next year. And I was wondering what your plan was for educational outreach to the community on the new rules and regulations should be passed this.
Fairly straightforward. We try to put out flyers every year. I mentioned in study session that Joe Sexton typically will print flyers, but we, it's a great partnership with, with PD and Fire. And we, we visit the stands quite often. And ultimately, we end up just going around, driving the city. I mean, the, the timeframe that fireworks are being sold is really a big public education event. So we're literally wash our cars and get out there, and we're, we're driving, driving around, talking to people, and it's really the best, the best way to do it. People are very receptive to this. And rarely do we actually come across kind of a hostile situation. So it's literally just getting out, talking to people, which is really the best part. So it's.
When you mentioned getting out there and talking to people, this isn't, this isn't like enforcement kind of talks. This is education, and is it ahead of time? Is it while people are setting off fireworks? Can you tell me what that driving around, what it looks like to you?
So typically, it's been a little bit easier with the, the timeline of discharging fireworks from the twenty-eight, or sale of fireworks being from the twenty-eighth through the third, you could, you could sell them. And so really, we knew that any fireworks that were discharged during that time, they really technically shouldn't be. So it was pretty easy when there wasn't a lot of fireworks, when there wasn't a lot of activity, to kind of just go hit those hotspots. And we're just driving the neighborhood, and you know, we hand, hand them a little flyer or something, talk to them like, hey, I know you probably didn't know, here's when you can discharge. So the, the plan would be to, to do something similar, similar to that. I have three guys in my office, and we basically drive around with our windows down or the radio and the, the fire radio on, and hey, there's fireworks discharged in Minette. We're gonna go drive Minette and talk to people down there. So it's very casual. And that's what I mean, is it's kind of the fun part, too, that you get a those people are pretty receptive.
Thank you very much, Captain Six. I think if there's no other, is there any other counselor that has, oh, Coughlin, President Coughlin, go right ahead.
Thank you, Vice President. Yeah, two, just two quick comments. Yeah, absolutely support education over writing tickets. If the education's effective, absolutely. And then I do recall the study session regarding enforcement that the, if I remember correctly, the mayor stated that if a vendor is, you know, reported to be selling fireworks, that at that point would be outlawed, that the administration could take, take action against those vendors. So I just want to say I do see a enforceable good portion of this ordinance.
Were you asking for the administration to comment on that, or just making the comment that you?
Making the comment, that's what I recall. I am open to, to corrections, but that's what I recall from study session.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there? Sure, come on up, Mayor. We were, we were actually letting you off the hook, but why don't you come on up?
Well, I appreciate that, and that's absolutely correct, President Coughlin.
Thank you. All right, is there any other discussion from counselors on this item? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna, uh, just checking in, no hands raised? Okay, good. I'll call for the question.
Councilmember Coughlin?
Yes.
Frye? Oh, I'm sorry. Dennehy?
No.
Good now?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries four yeses, one no. This concludes our hearings.
Hey, we made it through. There's still a few folks here. I think that's because they have to be here, but we appreciate you. We'll now go to council reports. Council reports are an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events they've recently intended or planned to attend or speak on any other city-related topics. Since this is the last council meeting of the month, we'll start with District Six. Counselor Anna Mockler.
Okay. Hi. All right, so the District Six Council report will be rapid. Next slide, please. So this is my town hall at its lowest ebb. Next slide, please. Oh, that's just me. Next slide. Okay, so these are my town halls. They're every second Monday from four to six at the Public Works, one hundred Oyster Bay Avenue North. I think that's the last slide, yeah? Yeah. Okay, so I said this in private, and I said I would take the first opportunity to say it in public, so I'm doing so. At the last public meeting, it was interpreted that I was saying that we should not accept money, that, that the Parks Department was simply accepting money and doing whatever people wanted. I, I certainly did not mean that at all. Here's my thing. If we're going to give money to parks or to any city department, that if the departments are there to serve the people, that we should first find out what those people want. For example, the pickleball fields at Lions Park. Perhaps those people at Lions Park wanted to have a rose garden, you know? I just think. I just think that we, that we should be representing the people at public facilities. Okay. I, I hope I've made that clear. So zooming along on the council report, Juneteenth, I have no photos. I got too much, I started talking too much. It was cold, wet, enthusiastic. I had a real good time. Here's to better weather next year, because so far the last two years in a row have been pretty spitty. Wishing everybody who celebrates a happy Eid al-Adha next week on June twenty ninth. One of the things that kept coming up at the town hall was talk about traffic calming and multimodal people being able to walk and bike and get around. Yeah, it's a lot of this I've already said in the course of today. So here's the thing, like, I like the people of my district. They are direct. There is no soft soap. And some people find this very rude, and I like it a whole real lot. I like people who tell the truth and shame the devil. I want to make it easier to hear from them and have their comments translate into actions. When council hears from so many people that they want a walkable, bikeable, accessible Bremerton, we, the council should and are putting into every effort into giving them what they want. By making Bremerton attractive to the people who live here, that will attract more people who like our direct, hands-on fellow residents. That's a really effective way of annexing Navy Yard City, Rocky Point, et cetera. Because we would be a more attractive city to be a part of. So that's it. Let's increase opportunities for people who live here to be heard and their concerns addressed. Been working on this for fifteen months, and I'll keep working on it. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Next up is District Five, Michael Goodnow.
Yeah, I don't have a significant report tonight, and I'm sorry that I missed part of the meeting. I'm actually down, down on Fourth Street where we had Make Music Day and the Music Discovery Center was doing some music. And I was just, had to support my staff here and make things happen. So apologies for missing the first part of the meeting. And, but it was a very successful event, by what I can tell. There's still some activity down there. It's just great to see folks out and about in downtown Bremerton on a non-first Friday. So that's all I have. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Counselor Goodnow. Next up is District Four.
Thank you. Also not a significant council report. But I did want to give a shout out to, I believe it was the Downtown Bremerton Association that did femmes and thems the other night. I believe it was them. Sorry, whoever did it. It was a great, great night. There were gift bags. There were a lot of restaurants doing happy hour. A lot of shops that were open, and it was really amazing to see so many people on a weekday night down in downtown Bremerton. And, you know, over the last, I guess it's been six years that I've lived here. You can really see the revitalization taking place. I know it got slowed down because of COVID. But because of a lot of people's hard work, including in this administration, it seems to be really getting vibrant down there. So thanks for that. And I, I think I said this at the study session, but I don't do it often enough at public meetings. But thank you to all the staff. I know that we're an interesting group to deal with, and I really, really appreciate all your hard work. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Counselor Dennehy. I'm going to go ahead and check in with District Three. President Coughlin, do you have any report today?
President, no slides, but a few things to mention. First, echo Councilmember Dennehy's comments, and thank you so much to all her, all of her work and staff and putting up with us at times. And also thank you, Vice President Chamberlain, for, for chairing extremely excellently tonight. Much appreciated. I am for folks off at Association of Washington City's annual conference, which has been really, really fantastic. Hearing sessions on how to have effective meetings, how to have difficult conversations, learning about public works funding. Got a tour of Spokane. They have some new joint facilities between their library and school district. That's really exciting. A maker space they opened, so need to learn what other cities are doing and how they're funding and what we can do as well. And they released this cool deck of cards that each card's a different, different city on it. So I'm happy to say we are apparently the, the three of spades for Bremerton. I got Harborside Fountain Park there. So that's, that's pretty neat. And so I look forward to coming back and giving a more thorough report on, on what I've learned. Before I finish, I do want to respond to some of the, the public comments we had at the start of the evening regarding the MLK area. It is in my district. I, I do go by pretty much every day. And without getting into details, it's tricky. We all know this is a really tricky situation. I will just say that the council on our goals and priorities is to update our, the city camping ordinance. It's currently not real enforceable the way it's written with, with the recent court decisions. So we will be tackling that quite shortly. And I think that's a that's a great place to have some of these really difficult conversations about how to, how to help folks who need it by recognizing the impacts that that has in the community. But with that, thanks all again, and great meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you, President Coughlin. Denise Fry had to leave, so I think we're going to skip her report. And I think, I guess that leaves me in District One. I just wanted to say a couple of things about my district, which I'm I've got Blueberry Park and I got Lions Park, y'all, and they are blooming and bustling right now. I have a little pea patch that I help with, and it's just blooming. Everything's starting to come together there. And I got a chance to finally put in and do some kayaking over near Lions Park and, and up around the bridges the other day. And we just live in such a beautiful place, and I'm so grateful for all that that our Parks Department does, but also the city at large and Public Works to keep our shoreline safe and, and healthy and keep our, our parks open and accessible for folks. We have new pickleball courts. So just for folks, just educational purposes, if you want to check out a net, you can come to the Parks and Recreation between eight thirty and four thirty-five, five, Monday through Friday to check out a net, or something really exciting is happening. I hear that the West Sound pickleball community is looking at lock boxes perhaps, so that if you join up with them, pay thirty dollars a year, you might have access to their equipment. Now, that's just what's being talked about right now. But for those of you who are pickleball fanatics, I had to learn a lot about pickleball this week, by the way. Then this is information for you. Beautiful lines on our courts. Thank you very much to to the West Sound pickleball community and also to Lions for those generous donations for that. And I just have just a quick thing that I want to share. And, you know, this, I don't know if anybody's going to tune in later and see this, that might find this story helpful, or if anybody's still tuning in. I have just a couple of slides, and I just want to do a quick honoring. Okay, this isn't just to show you pictures of me when I was little. This is to kind of elevate and prop up one of my relatives. This is Andrew William Hales. He and I, he was my, one of my younger cousins that I grew up with. It was a rough and tumble life. I'll tell you that much. I grew up with all these boys. And it's he was, loved the outdoors. This is him on the Appalachian Trail. He was just always, you know, just a rough and tumble kid too. Loved soccer, loved being outdoors, loved dogs. And just, it's been five years since, since my beautiful cousin passed of depression and alcoholism. And I just wanted to just honor him and how sweet and beautiful he was. And also to just encourage anybody who might be struggling, and we can go to the next slide. That if you do have, you know, if you are struggling in any way, that there's, there is a national suicide prevention line, lifeline that you can call. And just to encourage anybody, I mean, and my cousin lived in a state where he didn't have access to some of the same care and resources that we did, that we do here in Washington State. And so if you are feeling alone in any way, there is a national hotline you can reach out to. And just know that you're not alone, and that's all I'd like to share. Thank you. So with that, the next study session will be held in the sixth floor council conference room next Wednesday, June twenty eighth, beginning at five PM, with a remote option by Zoom still available. This concludes tonight's regular council business. This meeting is adjourned. Here comes the gavel. There you go.